I call to order the regular city council meeting for Monday, July 7th. I would ask that everybody please silence your devices so that we can proceed uninterrupted. And first order of business is roll call.
Blessam.
Here.
Fuller.
Here.
Janser.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Pittner.
Here.
Samuelson.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three is the mayor's report. I had several engagements, team Minot meeting at Minot Air Force Base, joint service club meeting with a proclamation of Robert Polk Day, a visitor back to our community who was notable in his influence on many civil rights and local matters. Attended the Minot Area Community Foundation 25th anniversary celebration and a couple of the, two of the neighborhood meetings that we had in the interim as well as the MPO board meeting here last week. So are there any questions on those items? Okay, seeing none, we will proceed to section four, which is the, which is reports, starting with the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the community. As always, the city manager memo is prepared and available in the packet. Be happy to stand for any questions, should the council have any. If not, there's two presentations or discussions I'd like to cover underneath the city manager report this evening. The first one is Acting Chief Blessus and Captain Sunheim would like to give an update on our SVAS contract and where we're at with that. And at the conclusion of their discussion, we have Aaron Palmer here, prepared to do a presentation to council
All right, Mayor Janser, members of the city council, I asked Captain Sunbachen, or Sunheim, I'm sorry, Captain Sunheim to prepare a six-month report on the agreement with Service Valley Animal Shelter. I also asked Laura Garcia and Zach Kuchenberg to be here today from Service Valley Animal Shelter to answer any questions you may have in terms of the shelter. But I just wanted to, I know you have a copy of the, of the report from Captain Sunheim. I wanted to address a couple of points in it, just so that, so that you and the community know where we stand as far as the police department is concerned. So, starting off, the history of the Service Valley Animal Shelter agreement. Prior to that, we had an agreement with Minot Vet Clinic for pound services. And in that agreement, we, we approximated about $45,000 per year. That's what our budget was. And when we moved to Service Valley, we came to the conclusion that it would cost us approximately $200,000. So that's, that's about a 400% increase. And I wanted to make sure I explained to you, part of that is that we were getting an extremely good deal from Minot Vet Clinic. And I wanted to make sure that that's clear. Because when we actually looked for agreements with other cities, other communities, we determined that the amount that we're spending or the amount that we're, we're asking the council to spend for, for vet clinic services or pound services is somewhat consistent, is very consistent with other communities. So that's the first thing that I wanted to make sure I, I point out in this report. This year, we've had 74 dogs impounded, which is, and which of that, 47% have been returned to the owners. We've had 15, I'm sorry, 85 cats impounded, 15% returned to the owners. It's not, that's not uncommon to see cats, because there, there tends to be a lot more feral cats where we don't get them back to their owner. But one of the ways that we could really improve our process is to increase the number of dogs that we're, we're getting back to, to their owners. And I'll talk about that in a little bit here. Fiscal summary. Right now, we're at about $85,000 that we've spent this year. And that's at the six-month point. So that's a little bit less than the $200,000. There's a couple of reasons for that. But we're approximately $14,000 per month on average. To date, we've only recouped $2,338 from fees from animal, animals reclaimed. But that number doesn't really reflect what was saved by having owners come and get their, their animals. I mean, we're not recouping a ton of money, but the amount of money that we didn't have to pay out in rehoming fees, there's an $85 rehoming fee for each animal that doesn't get claimed. There is expense of having them take up kennel space in our, in our pound. And then there's also the unknown expense of how many animals we had to turn away because our pound was full. So, so obviously, recouping expenses from, from animal owners is, is only part of the story. Some of the challenges that we've faced, and this has affected us in a couple of ways, is safekeeping evidentiary holdovers, what we call holdovers for animals. We've seen a dramatic increase in that. And to that extent, between three and seven animals that we've had to hold long-term. When you're only holding, and those are all dogs, when you're only holding five kennels, and you have three taken up with long-term holds, it, I mean, it doesn't take a mathematician to let you know that that's, that's not a very good situation. Right now, we're at seven for long-term holds. And these are animals that are being held because they were, their owners were charged with either abusing the animals, abuse or neglect of the animals. And in the, in the judicial system, animals are considered property. And as a result, we're in a situation where we're holding these animals because the state's attorney's office has not given us the authority to, to rehome these animals because their property in the court process has to happen first. And so, we're in a catch 20, 20, uh, catch 22 in that situation. We just, we, we can't rehome the kennel, the animals. We've had conversations with our city attorney, the state's attorney's office, and our options are limited in terms of what we can do outside of Service Valley Animal Shelter. One of the options that we have potentially would be to, to use, uh, use, uh, I'm losing the term. What is it called? Fostering, fostering of animals, to take care of that. But there's legal concerns with that. There's liability in, in the city fostering out animals that don't belong to us. So that's obviously a challenge that we're running into. One of the, one of the side effects to having that many animals, and when you're holding five kennels, you can increase that number if the kennels are available to us. But one of the issues that we run into is that we're having to turn away animals because our kennel space is being taken up by these long-term holds. And as a result, we're not taking in nearly as many, which is one of the reasons that, that we're a little bit below projection on, on expenses. It's not a good reason to be under. We're just not providing the service to the community, which is unfortunate. But, but that is, that is the situation we're running into. I will say this. There's been a misconception in the community that Service Valley is turning animals away in emergency situations. Every time there's been an emergency situation where we've asked them, they have found a way to help us. So they have been very good partners in that respect. Situations where an animal is abandoned and comes into our care, maybe their owner is arrested for a criminal charge, and there's no one to care for that animal. And we know that animal will be put in peril by leaving it in its current location, whether it's at a house or in a vehicle. They have stepped up and found a way to help us every single time. So they should definitely be applauded for that. It's not an easy thing for them to do when they're, when they're in unlimited space as well. So, the last thing I wanted to touch on, we're, we're looking at different community engagements to, to try to, to get information out there in terms of animals that are being taken in so we can get them released quicker and easier, get the owners to come and, to realize where their, their animal is. One of the things we did was we created a Facebook page with Service, on, on, well, Val, Service Valley Animal Shelter. And actually, they created the, the Facebook page, but we're a partner with them in it. And just to try to get more coverage, you know, people out there knowing, knowing what's going on. We've increased our communication between the staff of Service Valley Animal Shelter and our dispatch center so that they actually know the sta, the status of the animals in the Ultimately, we need to change a couple of ordinances to benefit the city. And that's something that we will be putting up in front of you in the future. But one of the ordinances would be the licensing of animals. Right now, they're required to do a licensing. That's just not working. Right now, it's a $2 fee that a veterinarian, a one or $2 fee that a veterinarian can collect on it. It's just not happening. There's not many veterinarians participating in licensing in the city of Minot, which is a problem. What I'd like to see us go to is chipping of animals so that when our, when our, when our community service officers pick up an animal, they can instantly determine who the owner of that animal is and try to get it back to, to its owner prior to ever having to go to Service Valley Animal Shelter. Save us an expense, save everybody an expense. Also increase in fees that, that would actually match the expense that we're taking in. One of the things I, I, I asked, I tasked Captain Sunheim with was to come up with options. I knew that this was, this was a huge expense to go to Service Valley Animal Shelter, and we needed an option for the city council in terms of, of what we can do in the future. And that option, we're limited if, if others don't put in. But the options that we're looking at is a city-owned pound. And I can tell you right now that this, that that's not a cheap process under any circumstance. There's land acquisition, design, personnel, equipment, regulatory equipment, and agency partnership. That, all those are expenses that we have to come up with in terms of run this operation. One of the things I asked Captain Sunheim to do was to make sure that whatever proposal we put up in front of you is realistic. That it's not, well, we could probably get by if we got this many volunteers to come in. We could probably make this work. I wanted it realistic, what it would actually cost us, so that if I come to you with an expense that you can expect that that's what we'll end up having to pay at the end of the year. Hopefully less if we could find volunteers to help out, but, but not reliant on that. So that's what he's working on right now. So in the future, you'll see that option come in front of you. So ultimately, that's where we stand with the pound services. I'll stand for questions. And like I said, Captain Sunheim, we'll, we'll have him step up. He can fill in some of the gaps that I might have missed if you have any, any questions for me. I'll let him do it.
Alderman Fuller.
Thanks, Mark. Dale, quick question, I guess. If we go to something like an ordinance where we have mandatory licensing and chipping as a part of it, have you guys estimated how much that would offset? I mean, have you guys gotten into those numbers yet at all? Kind of?
We already do have a light, an ordinance that requires licensing. Like I said, it's just not being utilized. Because that ordinance is in place and, well, I mean, it, it relies on veterinarians to actually license the animals. And there's, it's not really worth their time, because I think they, they make like $2 off of each animal that they license. We're just not seeing that happen. So licensing, the old tag version of licensing is not the answer anymore. What I'd like to see is a chip. Because the chip will stay with that animal no matter what. They don't lose their collar and then lose the, the chip. It's still there. So.
Okay.
We have not estimated what it would offset, but with, with only 47 being recovered, if, if 75% came back with chips, you would at least be able to locate where the, who the owners were at one point, whether they abandoned the animal. We could take action more in that respect as well. So it provides us options.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Blessam.
Thanks, Dale. Thanks for the update. Can you, can you talk a little bit more about the, about the holdovers? The main thing that I want to understand is, you know, we're in a different, we're in a different setup now, certainly, than, than where we were before. I guess I just want to understand, are, are we experiencing more of those? Or is it simply the setup that's, that's making it more difficult now?
I understand is we are experiencing more of them.
Okay.
One of the, one of the issues that we're running into is the length of the process it takes. The Minot Vet Clinic would just eat the cost on that in the past, is my understanding. They didn't, they may have charged us for certain things, but, but once on long-term holds, we didn't get charged necessarily the same. So, so it's, that's not something we can expect a provider to do. They, they were, they were good partners in a lot of ways. But so, and it didn't happen that often. Now we're seeing, well, we have seven of them in there now. I mean, that, that's probably an off year. That's probably a huge increase from what we would ever see in the past.
Okay. So if I can continue on that. So just, just kind of continued on that thought process, then, you know, we're in a, we're in the kind of that weird situation where we're constrained by space more than anything else. In fact, we can't even spend the money that we've allocated to it, primarily because we don't have any more room, right? I mean, that's, I think that's the right way to think about that, is that they can't take any more animals for us right now. So we're actually kind of stuck in that regard. So is it, you know, should, as, as part of what you guys are looking into is, is part of the answer? You know, is there a different allocation of the, of the cages? Is it, do we need more for dogs? Do, you know, are there, are there other answers? Not that I'm looking to make sure we spend the money. That's not my point. I want to make sure we provide the service to the community. That's what we're, that's what we're intending here, right?
Mayor Janser, Alderman Blessam. I, I, obviously, in a perfect world, we'd have more cages and more availability for, for animals. Right now, I think our top limit is 10, 10. And I'd have Service Valley answer that specific. But we have, we have 10 dog kennels that we can utilize. They can make space in other ways for emergency situations, but really, we're limited at 10. That's the most that we can, we have to pay for those 10 if we, if we reserve those. Otherwise, they're going to fill them with other animals, right? So right now, we generally started off with five. That was what we estimated that we would need normally, on a normal occasion, is five. And that probably would be the case if we weren't taking in seven animals on long-term hold. You know, because it takes three days to move an animal out, an abandoned animal out. One that, that comes in, move it out to be rehomed after three days. You're not holding those spaces as long. But when you have seven that are long-term, that, that creates a problem.
Right. And if I can continue, just one more thing, Mr. Mayor. So, and just to, just to, Dale, more for information for you, as you guys are looking at, at how this goes, I just want to let you know where my thought process is. I mean, for me, it, it seems to make more sense to work through the operational things to make this work with them bef, well before we ever look at taking something on ourselves. I think we're all probably in agreement with that. But just, just want to make sure that that's clear to everybody that that, you're talking an immense step, once we go down the path of buying property and, and a building and staffing it. So that's number one. And number two, on this, on the idea of, of registration and chipping and all of those things, you know, that, to me, this is another one of those things that's sort of a, a basic American freedom issue, right? So I would rather see us, from my perspective, say, look, if you're not being a responsible owner, there are consequences to that, and they can cost you money. But to ask every last dog and cat owner, regardless of whether they'll ever have an issue in the entire lifespan of that animal, to pay or to be registered, to me, is the, is the wrong approach. And so I just thought I'd throw that out for my colleagues here. And I think, I think we want to stay on the freedom side of that and to, to have consequences when you're not on the right side of it, is my thought on it.
Mayor Janser, Alderman Blessam, that, that side of it is definitely a policy such situation that you guys are irresponsible for. That is an option that I would see would make that turnover happen quicker. But yeah, definitely a policy. If that's the choice you went with, if that's the route you went with, then, then that's the route that we go with.
Any other questions for Chief Blessus?
I think, just as one, one thing to add, Alderman Blessam, I think that, that concern is very valid. I think the one thing is with that is ultimate, the goal that we share with SBS is ultimately reunification of animals with their owners. And so that's where that light comes in. So you're absolutely right, balancing that is, is key.
Okay. City manager, do you have anything to add?
No, not on that issue at this time. I think we'll plenty of opportunity to discuss it more in the future. I do agree with some hesitancy of building our own shelter and operating it. And the, the costs go even much further. You're still going to have to have a vet to come in and help service the animals and check on them while they're in our, in our custody and care. And that's an alternative I would prefer to avoid if at all possible. So if there's no further questions on that issue, I'd like to invite Aaron Palmer up to talk about their work that they've completed for us.
Hello, I'm going to get the presentation pulled up on the screen here. Awesome. Okay.
All right. So for our time together today, we have an agenda on the next slide, just to give you a little bit of an idea of what we'll be covering. So for the compensation study, we wanted to start out by grounding you all in kind of the objective that we were looking to deliver on and also the process that we took. And then we'll give you a little bit of insight into what we heard from our leadership interviews and our employee focus groups. But where we'll spend most of our time is within the summary and recommendation section. We have drafted a compensation philosophy that we'll share with you all. We'll walk you through the compensation structure review and some pay-for-performance considerations. We'll walk you through the job architecture and kind of what that means. And then ultimately, we'll finish with the staffing assessment template. We've got about 25 slides to get through it. I know we're aiming to take about 20 minutes. So just for your awareness, there are some additional details in the appendix as well that we'll reference throughout the upcoming slides. So the objective of this work, ultimately, we came in to evaluate the existing structure and processes internally and kind of evaluated against market data and best practices and see if there were any adjustments or enhancements that we might recommend to make sure that the approach is sustainable, it's efficient and reasonable from an administrative standpoint. And then, of course, making sure that it's delivering on helping us to attract, engage, and retain the talent that we need. And so if you look at the structure of our process below, we kicked off this work in February and ultimately went through May into early June, going through steps like internal preparation, document and data collection, leadership interviews, which we'll speak about in a moment, but kind of understanding the philosophy, strategy, and challenges. Employee focus groups, which gave us another lens to collect feedback through. And then we understood the current processes that were in place before we could ultimately effectively compare those to the market and best practices and make any suggestions. And so then we identified some opportunities. We brought those back to the project team to make some decisions together on how to move forward. And then we brought our employee data back into it to say, okay, now based off of some of these changes we're considering, what impact does that have at the employee level? And we assessed that. So ultimately, in the month of May, that's when we got into the results. And we'll be walking you through some of that content today. So for the leadership interviews, you can see on the left side of your screen, the 15 individuals that we've met with. Really, the purpose, as I mentioned, was to understand the current landscape, gain any feedback on it, and also understand the culture so that we know the environment that we're operating in. You can read some of the overarching themes and commentary below. But I think one of the biggest take homes is that with the follow-up and next steps from this work, we really have an opportunity to, to be really intentional with our change management. There's an opportunity to cultivate a lot of trust through this. And ultimately, pay for performance, I think, is the biggest question mark. There's varying levels of preparedness or openness to it. And so at the end of the day, the steps, the next steps that we're taking as follow-up action items really should help us to tackle that moving forward. And so similarly, when we look at the employee focus groups, so we met with six different focus groups. You can see those over on the right of your screen. But we had 29 different employees total participate in those. And so again, we have our overarching themes here listed, a couple different trends across some of the different types of groups. And the, the detailed outcomes are in the appendix. But this is where, again, at the end of the day, we're, we're getting a feel for what's important to people. Compensation is important. It's also not everything, right? It's one component to be considered against many. And so this is where, once again, that, that change management and cultivating trust throughout our next steps is going to be really important. And so ultimately, the, the work that we've done, there's several action items that are coming out of it, starting with a compensation philosophy draft. And so this is what we've put together and will share with you in more detail. But it's making a statement to employees about what the direction and strategy is of the city of Minot and how we think about compensation in that area. We also conducted the compensation structure review, which We also conducted the compensation structure review, which included a cost of labor analysis. And making sure that the structure in place aligns with the local labor market. That the structure makes sense, that our range width is appropriate, and the midpoint progression makes sense. And then we also did a compression analysis within the new framework, which makes sure that. We don't have a a situation where new employees are being hired and paid more than. Employees that have been working for us for a long time. We also did um, a job architecture framework build out, and so. This helps us in a couple of ways. It helps us to classify our jobs based off of skill set and function. It also helps us. Kind of provide a career progression framework so that people can see opportunities for growth over time, which is really important. We also have a staffing assessment template that we'll share. So ultimately, this is giving us kind of a framework to develop a business case. When there's a staffing need that arises. And then finally, the communication tools. So you've heard me talk about the change management piece of this quite a bit so far. Um, the management talking points is kind of a cheat sheet for managers to speak to this work moving forward. And then the employee FAQs that draft helps us to get. Ahead of any questions that employees might ask. We anticipate those and proactively provide answers. So. Ultimately, as we mentioned, the the future state, there's an opportunity to continue to dive deeper into that performance management process. Um, and by doing that, it'll set the stage for that pay-for-performance approach. But it's going to have to be a scaled approach to make sure that we're sensitive to some of the um, apprehension or insecurity around kind of that shift in approach.
Okay, so now walk us through the compensation structure review. And to Chelsea's point, I'm going to keep a quick clip throughout. Um, so just keep a, if you have any questions, we'll get to those towards the end. The first thing we wanted to talk through as we set the stage is we created a compensation philosophy draft, and so what we did is we wanted to make sure there's that connection between. How we think about and administer compensation. To the aspirations that we have as an organization and what we're trying to drive. Um, so you can see across the the slide here, we've taken those four aspirations. And we've essentially modeled into that how we plan to administer compensation so that it is. Building into those four aspirations, and so the employees are able to make the connection between. Their performance as an individual to organizational performance and therefore their future compensation opportunity. And so then, when we talk about just compensation philosophy as as a whole. It's really setting the tone for how we plan to administer it and move forward. And so once we worked on this compensation philosophy draft, the next thing we wanted to do. Was to take a look at the local labor market and to make sure that we had a good understanding. Um, of what the cost of living and the cost of labor is. And so I'll ask, is someone else shifting the slides because they're not following the same clip that I am? There we go. Okay. So. When I talk about cost of living, the first thing I want to say is cost of living is all about the consumer market. So when we think about it, it's. What do I, Hannah, as a person, experience when I go out to buy my groceries or fill up my gas tank? What is it like when I'm trying to rent or buy a home? All of those things are indicative of the consumer market, and so things like inflation and things of that nature are going to have an impact. The other thing about cost of living as a metric is that it's influenced by personal choice. So the car I choose to drive that I'm filling up, that has an impact versus. How close I choose to live from work versus how far away, you know, all those different decisions influence what the cost of living is. And so we need to have a metric that allows us to differentiate based on geography and where we're located. That is able to equitably account for all employees across the organization, and so that's where cost of labor comes into play. And so when we talk about cost of labor, we're talking about what companies in a given local area. Are willing to pay employees to do or produce a certain type of work. So this is very much the labor market, and it's independent of the consumer market. However, when we think about how these two things are connected. They're connected in that we fill the gap between the two of them. These two data points can move in the same direction or in opposite directions if they wanted to. Um, but what we tend to see, if you kind of step back and look at the data over time. Is that these two metrics tend to kind of parallel and follow the same trajectory as one another. Um, and so again, employees are going to feel the gap that exists between the two. And so one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we understood as we were going in and looking at best practices around our compensation practices is. What does our local labor market look like? Because that's what we want to make sure our structure is rooted in. But we also want to have awareness of cost of living because at the end of the day, that's what our employees feel, and we want to be mindful of that. And so as we ran these um, this analysis. The take-home message, and you'll see some of the data here on the next slide, is that. Our local labor market is very much in alignment with the overall national average. And we're similarly situated to cities like Bismarck and Fargo. We've got some local comparators like Williston and other municipalities that have higher cost of labor. But they also have a higher cost of living. So I'll go ahead. Let's go to the next slide here so you can kind of see the breakdown of the data. The top half of this slide, you're going to see cost of labor. The bottom half, you're going to see cost of living. And what we do is we take a look at each of these by the different salary thresholds. Because we feel differences compared to national based on the salary threshold that certain professions exist within. Um, so if I look across the top at the green, you're seeing the twenty thousand dollar threshold, thirty-six thousand, forty-eight, so on and so forth. And so when we take a look at our cost of labor for Minot, I'll take that twenty thousand dollar box for our first example. You see one oh two point six. Essentially, what I'm saying there is that the local labor market is two point six percent higher than national average. So if national average is a hundred, we're two point six per percent higher. So what you'll see on whole, as a whole, when you step back is that Minot is sitting right around the national average. Depending on the salary threshold that you're residing within. If you look down below, you see the cost of living. And so again, if we're comparing it back to the national average and a hundred is national. You see Minot is sitting below national average uh, for cost of living. So when you kind of step back and look at each of these data points and and what it really means is that. Um, while we don't have the most competitive labor market compared to other cities. Our dollar for dollar is going a little bit further when we think about the gap that employees experience. Um, between cost of labor and cost of living, right? So in that way, it it means that we're. We've got a little bit more buying power as individuals when you think of it that way. The other thing we took a look at is just general trends across data. Is we see that government data, especially in compensation, tends to come in lower than other market data points, like our all industries types of data cuts. And so taking a look at this analysis in this way allows us to make sure we've got a full industry perspective of what our true labor market is. So moving to the next slide. The next piece of this is, you know, we took that analysis to basically understand our labor market, and now we wanted to take a look at the structure. That we tip that we have in place currently. And so. Uh, work has been done in the past with Minot to create the the salary ranges and to make sure the market data. Was brought in, and so the goal isn't to reprice every position. But the goal here is to make sure that we're looking at the structure that's in place to say. If our goal is to move to pay to performance in the future, does this structure serve us for that goal? And so essentially, when you step back and look at salary structures, there's a variety that of of different types of structures that exist. Each have their own advantages and disadvantages, and you'll start to see um, different levels of application depending on the industry, on the organization, that kind of thing. So commonly, what you'll see is job-based, traditional step structures and that kind of thing. City of Minot has a step structure as their current um. Uh, salary or base pay structure. And so essentially, when we step back and look at this, we've ended up with two different approaches. Um, that we think will support different areas of the business, and I'll talk to you a little bit more about that here in just a second. But at the end of the day, what we need to be able to do, the underlying tone is again, we need to be able to differentiate pay for performance and. Acknowledge that different business units operate uniquely. Um, so as we started digging into the current structure. There's currently sixty-two unique salary grades, and they're labeled from thirty-eight to one hundred. There's about a hundred and sixty-two unique jobs. Um, that currently have incumbents in the hundred and seventy-five titles in total, meaning we have some open positions right now. Our lowest utilized grade is forty-four, and our highest utilized grade is ninety-eight. Every single um, salary range has seventeen steps, so they're all consistent with one another. And when we look at the midpoint progression and the width, we see consistency throughout all the grades with a considerable amount of overlap. And so as I take you to the next slide, here's here's where we landed with our recommendations in terms of. Where we want to put some attention and emphasis. First of all, we want to consolidate the number of grades that exist. By designing the salary ranges a bit more strategically. So first, we want our salary ranges to mirror the market spread. So, you know, we might not have seventeen steps for every single grade. Every job has a kind of a spread of what the going rate is for that type of work. And we want to make sure our salary range mirrors what we see out there. We also want to make sure that we're creating a structure that's flexible enough and. Wide enough to be able to differentiate pay for performance. And so if we have something that is um. Very structured in terms of it follows tenure. There's no room for performance within that model. And so that's where we've got to kind of blend in. What's the best practice for the industries that we reside in versus also what's going to serve our business the best? So we want to first acknowledge that we need to create a midpoint progression that aligns with best practices. And so essentially, what I say is, when I say midpoint progression, I'm talking about the distance between the center point of each salary range. How far are those jumps? And what we see is typically in more entry-level roles, the jumps are going to be smaller because. Mastery of those competencies and the skills for those roles tends to be quicker, and people will promote through quicker. Whereas when you get into your advanced career stages, you might stay in that. Job title for the remainder of your career, and the goal is to be able to widen out that salary range and account for larger jumps. Because those types of positions take longer to master and uh, more more time to develop those competencies. And so as we create those bigger jumps, we also modeled the spread to be consistent. So again, if the jumps are more narrow. We're going to have narrower salaries. Um, salary ranges versus if the jumps are bigger, we're going to have wider salary ranges. The other thing that we wanted to address is we need to decrease the magnitude of overlap that exists. So rather than having sixty-two salary grades where we're kind of jumping around and using them. Um, kind of offhanded, we're able to condense it down currently to twenty-seven. And so we're able to have jumps that kind of align with what we were already trying to have to do. Within the structure that broke it down to such a minute degree. And so this next slide is essentially the proposed structure that we have. And so what you'll see on the left is the title of the grade. It goes from ten to twenty-seven. Um, and then for the left side of it, you'll see the hourly um, salary range. So for example, a grade ten goes from fifteen ninety-six. To twenty-two ninety-three. And if we look at that in an annual rate, meaning I work a full forty-hour um, full-time employee. You can see the annual rates for that salary range here to the right. And then the stuff that we have in blue highlighted to the far right is the structure development. So. Philosophically, everything that I just took you on the same uh, the last slide. Is written out here numerically to show you how the midpoints will shift. And how the spread will shift to acknowledge the types of positions that fall within each salary grade. I think another key differentiator too, and I mentioned to you, we are recommending two different structures. This traditional base salary structure is very common across what we see most of our positions. However, in the realm of public safety, step structures are really the industry best practice. Um, and so we wanted to make sure that we weren't throwing the industry best practices out the window for the sake of alignment to the greater organization. And so that's why we're recommending two different approaches. So for public safety as a whole, um, we're essentially updating those steps to align with this proposed structure. However, it'll decrease the runway and allow for us to stay relevant with what's common practice out in the market. Which will really help with things like lateral transfers and things of those nature that tend to be difficult. Alrighty, and so when you think of this new structure, one of the things I want to spend just a moment talking on is how you're intended to utilize it. And so on this slide, I have two different metrics. Um, compa ratio is our comparison ratio, and it's essentially saying, where do I stand as my rate of pay? Compared to the midpoint in the salary range. So it's a quick and easy way for us to say, all right. How close are you to the middle? Are you below it? That would be less than one. Are you greater than it? That would be greater than one. Smack dab in the middle, you're one. Range placement is the secondary measure, and my preferred measure in many ways. Because it allows us to show where a person resides within the salary range. And so as you can see, we've broken this mock salary range up into four different quartiles. And again, you can see we're now able to differentiate pay based on the way the employee is showing up in the position. And we're able to use those metrics, compa ratio and range placement. To essentially justify or validate why someone is where they are within the salary range based on how they're showing up within the role. So rather than kind of moving a step per year regardless of how you perform. There would be uh, you know, within our performance management process, we have the ability to say, all right, what is the appropriate place in the salary range? Based on more than just that single factor. And then so um, the kind of final piece to the compensation. Framework is we wanted to do a compression analysis, and essentially. We created these time and position guidelines that serve as a rubric to make sure that people don't fall behind over time. And so if you think about what tends to happen when organizations don't keep up with their salary structure. Is they'll tend to see over time that they're out there trying to make offers to recruit new talent. And they're having to pay more than employees they currently have. In their organization. And so the goal is to make sure that's not happening so that we're never risking. Losing our highest performers or institutional knowledge. And so essentially, we created a database as part of this project. To say, all right, within this new structure and framework, how do we make sure that we don't end up with compression over time? Again, time and physician is just one factor. Um, but again, it's allowing us to use this more now as a framework. As opposed to a um, prescriptive approach based on time that has no space for performance within that. And so this next slide I have for you is just a framework about performance management. Again, the idea behind this was to set the stage for how could we incorporate. Performance into our compensation practices in the future. And so this slide really is just informational because performance management really should be. The kind of the engine or the driver that makes the connection between your business strategy and your people's strategy, right? It's about taking our mission, our aspirations and our vision. And turning those into goals and competencies and targets. That we can measure at the individual level that are therefore being, you know, measurable and actionable at the organizational level. So again, this slide here is just essentially to kind of help you see the connection between. Um, the type of salary structure that we're recommending. And how performance management plays into that, being able to allocate performance and. All the other contributors to the ongoing talent cycle that performance management. Um, a strong performance management process will really lay the foundation for. And so this slide here. It's really about some performance management considerations that I just wanted to make sure um, that we got to talk about because. We talk a lot about the change management kind of early on in this presentation, and I can't hone in on that enough, I think. Because really, when we talk about pay for performance or a value-based pay. We're trying to draw the connection for employees about their salary increases are directly tied to the way they're showing up. And providing that incentivization. But there's some things that we've got to be able to do. First, what type of measurability do we have? And do we have job types? That allows us to measure the output in a way that is um, objective and not subjective. Uh, we have to think about the cultural fit, and so essentially there needs to be some stage setting. About will it be seen as motivation for employees? Or is it going to be seen as pressure? And how do we make sure that we're setting the stage with time to make sure it's seen more as motivation? When we think about the process and design and the level of transparency that we have to report. Report our performance metrics out on, we need to make sure the metrics are fair. And transparent and that will constantly align back to our overall organizational goals. And then the final piece is the the budgetary piece is planning ahead to make sure. Do we have the long-term budget in place and the administrative support on deck? To make sure we're we're doing this ongoing monitoring and process improvement because. It's not a point-in-time reference, you know, to do your performance review. When done well, it's facilitating conversations throughout the entire year. And that is, it it is a shift in the way that um, you kind of have to think about it. So to the right side of this um, this slide, what you'll see is when pay for performance is done well. These are the things that we're trying to drive, but again, we've got to lay the foundation there. And then I'm going to close this section out here with just. Again, some different types of structures that exist that we considered as we went through the process. Just for you to be able to see there are pros and cons for different types of structure layouts. Um, and so where we landed on the two different type of structure approaches really. Get landing on, you know, what is best practice within the types of roles and the type of entities. We are and where we're recruiting for talent and how we're going to need to be able to retain our talent. With that, I'm going to take a voice break and hand it over to Chelsea.
Awesome. Okay, so we'll cruise through the job architecture se- section pretty quickly.
To Hannah's point, when you're moving towards a pay-for-performance approach, setting clear expectations is really important. And that's a big part of what job architecture helps us to do. So job architecture is really a fancy way to say we want to classify our jobs and provide a career progression framework. And so if you look in the top left, we have an example here. Essentially, we start with our overarching umbrella, which is an area. And then every area will have multiple families within it cascading down. And then similarly, each family will break down into more specific functions. And so if you think about business services as an example area, you might have families of finance, human resources, information technology as different families within that area. And so if we stay in the finance lane as our family, then we might have functions within that like accounts payable, accounts receivable, financial reporting, things of that nature. And so ultimately, the first part of it is helping us group jobs based off of the what, the key functions and skill sets required. And then we attach a career stage, which is part of different career tracks that form this matrix that allow us to say, here's how you can grow and develop over time. Here's what it means to be a supervisor compared to a manager. Here's clear expectations for where you're at right now. And by the way, here's what your next step could be and what it would take for you to progress to that level. And so if we go to the next slide, depending on how big your screen is over there, you might have to squint, but this is essentially our breakout. Up top, you'll see kind of the what that we were talking about. So the gray headers give us our areas. The bold letters within the box, those are our families. And then you can see the functions within each of those. And then you can see our career tracks on the bottom half. So we've broken those tracks into support, operational, professional, management and executive. And so ultimately, this is preparing us for what you'll see on the next slide, which comes back to that business case that we mentioned towards the beginning. And so all too often, managers will come to leadership or HR and say things like, hey, I have this person who's doing really great. I want to make sure that they stay, you know, how can I promote them up? And really, the way that we should be kickstarting this process is thinking about what the business case is for a role. Is there a gap that we need to solve for? And so for the sake of this example, we are saying the Parks and Rec leaders have recognized that we need a recreation program coordinator to deliver on something that we have identified as a gap. And so that's step one, right? Business case identified. Step two now is, okay, well, how does that fit into our structure? What level of expectation do we need to solve for that? And so step two would be to use the job architecture to classify the job. What's our required experience? What's the required education and qualifications? And so then we carry that into our step three. We've identified what we need. Now let's go source the candidate, whether that is internally or externally, and make sure that those boxes are being checked, that they meet the requirements for education and experience and so on. And so then we're able to enter into this and determine the appropriate compensation based off of the salary range that's assigned to that role. And so step four is essentially where we're saying, okay, here's the candidate we found that meets generally the requirements that we have. Where should we place them in the range based off of the years of experience and qualifications that they're bringing? And so this is really the the intended approach. An outcome of this is to say, okay, we have a fiscally responsible and a business case centric approach now to our compensation decisions that we're making.
Alright, so I'll jump in for this last slide here on the costing impact and example. So essentially, what we want to to share with this slide is the marriage between your salary structure and your job architecture. And so we just mirrored out what an example would look like in an area. And so we use traffic as an example here, but essentially you can see we've grouped them by area, we've grouped them by family and by function, and then what career track and stage they would fall into. And so now you can see on the right there, what is the current grade? And you'll see there's quite a bit of jumps between one level to the next versus the new proposed grade. You see that logical progression that very clearly identifies what a career, you know, path could look like for an employee with a lot less ambiguity between the significant jumps. And so again, it allows us to kind of get an idea of where do the positions lie within our new structure. But it also allows us to complement that compression analysis to say, alright, now that we've got people within these salary ranges, where should they fall based on not only time and position, but other factors such as performance? And so this last section is just to bring home in a little bit more detail what Chelsea was talking about in terms of the business case. We talk, we have a staffing assessment template. And so essentially, if the compensation structure and the job architecture serve as our framework to make sure that we've got clear expectations and clear compensation tied to that various progression, that we're able to adequately create the business case that we need whenever we're in pursuit of a new function of work or a new level of expectation. And so we went through with the team different workforce analysis, forecasting needs, gap analysis, cost analysis and competency evaluations. All of these unique different types of analytics essentially is to be able to say, what is your data? Right? Like, what is the, what is the business case? What is it that you're solving for? And what is the outcome going to be? So if we were to bring in this type of professional, what is it that we expect to see as an outcome? So again, these types of analytics that we went through over the course of the project is essentially just ways for us to be able to define that business case with using using our data as our guide. And there was a lot of strength within the team already behind some of these analytics and ownership of data across our department leaders. So I know that was a lot we tried to cover in a short amount of time. But kind of the summary and the takeaway is, at the end of the day, our recommendation for this current fiscal year is to maintain the current step process and structure that is in place and begin planning for implementation of a new pay plan for 2027. In essence, we want to make sure that this feels like something that is being done with the organization and with the employees as opposed to something that feels like it is, you know, feeling more forced. And so that's where the change management piece and the discussion about how powerful this can be, just takes time to make sure we educate our leaders and then our managers and then our employees over time. So with that, I'll pause and say first, thank you. And if anybody has any questions, Chelsea and I are here.
Alderman, bless him.
Okay, Hannah and Chelsea, thank you very much for that. I appreciate it very much. Looks like a lot of great work went into it. So Harold, just with what we've got up on here on on next steps, I just wanted to kind of level set for everybody. This talks about a new approach potentially for twenty-seven. Is that meaning moving to the new structure with performance-based pay thinking coming after that? Or is this headed towards getting both of those things done, let's say, over the next eighteen months with a 2027 start date for the for the new pay?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman, bless him. There's, there's two components that we're working on at the same time and Ms. Beck, our HR director, can can help answer this question too. The first one is the restructuring of the system itself, which they just gave some great detail on. The second one is the directive that you as a council have directed as far as trying to move towards performance-based pay. And in essence, there is a way to do both of them at the same time if that's what the council desires. But regardless of whether or not we knew we moved to performance-based pay or not, doing the structural changes is critical to help address some of these issues that that we're seeing and trying to get it more up to date to to deal with compression issues and and those kinds of things and to keep it more more fair across the board and more competitive.
I would just echo what you said. To to be more competitive, we are going to need to change the structure. Performance-based pay is a is a separate issue. We can do one, we can do both, we can do neither. I think it would behoove us to take it slow and steady. There are financial impacts, as I talked about, and really dig into what that's going to look like and understand how we can manage and help our employees through that change in an appropriate speed that doesn't cause fallout throughout the way and gets people excited and bought in and really understanding how it's a benefit to them.
Right, great. Yeah, if I can continue, I I agree completely. And I think that's really the, thank you for the answers because that's kind of where my mind was going, that it feels like these structural changes. I mean, I know from my perspective, you know, when I started at 3M in nineteen ninety-five, they were using a quartile-based system. You know, my entire time at Delta, quartile-based system. So we're, we're really catching up, I hope, to where industry has been and getting ourselves better aligned. And then the hope would be that that opens up the possibilities then, right? Now it gives us the opportunity if we think that that makes sense. Because I think the other thing that we all have to keep in mind is in my mind, we're at a crossroads in where we're headed here. We've got these pieces that are driving one part of our equation and the step-based system is really making that difficult today. We've got pressures coming the other direction. As those pressures get more and more intense, it gets a lot harder in a step-based system to make sure you're taking care of the people you need to take care of. And so we have to make sure that those things align as a long-term strategy. So I appreciate the work very much. And I think it's the right step. And you know, it's my hope that we can move forward with these with the with the structure changes and immediately turn our eye towards the next steps.
Alderman Olson.
Thank you. To either Hannah or Chelsea, I'm sure that you work with public entities and private entities. How many public entities do you see using a pay-for-progress kind of pay schedule?
It, I would say it varies and it can even vary based on the department. When you think about your, you know, local governments and municipalities, it's essentially many different organizations within a single umbrella. And so there's a lot of variance that exists based on the philosophy of the organization. I would say across the board, about eighty percent of organizations holistically are moving or in fully in some type of pay-for-performance model. And so it is definitely that, I think it's one of the things that most companies aspire to. I would say trying to find companies that say they've figured it out and they're doing it perfect is probably, you know, one of those things I think is aspirational across the board. Because there's so much about culture and strategy that fits into that. And so that's where the change management piece is huge. Rather than, again, rolling it out as quickly as we can, it's about making sure we set the stage for it first and then really get leaders bought in.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, it's interesting. If you were to go back even five-ish years, I think there was more of an even split fifty-fifty on pay-for-performance versus kind of that peanut butter approach, just a blanket increase for everyone. And it, and it kind of stayed that way. You might have people switching sides, but you still kind of maintain that that even split. In recent years, we've really seen movement towards the pay-for-performance model. And I think it's a direct result of feedback across the board. There's no quicker way to de-motivate your top talent than to to reward them or treat them the same as people who are maybe checking a box or even potentially underperforming. And so I think that has influenced the direction of an increase in prevalence of pay-for-performance across the board.
Thank you.
Alderman, bless him.
One other quick question. In the, in the information that you gave, you did do a carve-out for public safety. And so while I, I guess I'm understanding the mentality, we have that mentality for a lot of different things related to public safety. I'm a little concerned though that if we take a third, do a half of our workforce and don't bring them along with the same thought processes as the rest of our as our departments, that we run the risk of of further making that gulf bigger than it already is and different. And so I guess I'd like to hear a little bit from you on that. I mean, the way that I look at it is I understand the idea that, oh, man, we've got, you know, whether it's patrol officers that all have the same job and they're doing the same role all day. They run the same risks, they make the same commitments to the public. At the same time, we know exactly who we want to hire when we have a sergeant role come open. We know how we want to promote when we have a lieutenant role come come open. We identify the top performers. We have to or we can't operate as an organization. So can you comment a little bit on on the thought process behind specifically, in my mind, lagging public safety out of this plan?
Yeah. Well, I would say, first of all, in the public safety sector, it is much more common to see step structures. And so you know, making sure we're keeping a foothold in best practice was kind of central to this. But we also went about the process of essentially putting the two structures side by side. So that in essence, we've created them to be related to one another. It's just the application of it is somewhat different. And again, it aligns to what we see more out in the industry. There's definitely the opportunity to integrate pay-for-performance with a step structure. It can look a little bit different. But essentially, one of the big things that we heard when we did the leadership interviews and the focus groups was like, hey, there's been a lot of change lately and, you know, something needs to kind of stay the same. So it felt like the right place to say, let's, you know, hold on to what's working well as we work through other changes. And then make sure that at least it's complimented and ready to go in the future so that as that perception changes, you're well-suited to continue moving in the future.
So if I can continue.
Go ahead, Alderman, bless him.
So I guess I would, I would maybe look at it a little bit differently. I'm not, I'm not positive that the the path that we've gone down with public safety is, is what we want to model on right now. I think that we need to do things to make sure that the wonderful people we have working in these roles feel appreciated and that they're they're taken care of. And I think a model that heads the same direction as we're talking about with the others does exactly that. I mean, Hannah, you referred to that just a minute ago. I mean, one of the, one of the best ways we can ensure that we hold on to our top people is making sure that we're compensating them well and that they're recognized for the great work that they're doing each and every day. And so I don't disagree with you that the change management portion of this entire thing is paramount. That's that to me just says, hey, that's timing. But that doesn't change the fact that the path that we're we're suggesting here isn't the right one. So I, you know, I guess I was, that's of interest to me as we continue on because I think the way that we, the way that we treat our public safety folks, we have to use some of those same mentalities. Because we all know that there's people that are knocking it out of the park. And I certainly don't want them lagging behind in what we should be paying them.
Agreed.
Yep.
Any further questions for Hannah or Chelsea?
Mark, if I could just add one last thing, just one, one, one comment to make too. You know, the question of whether this is, this is out there in public sphere, whether it's happening anywhere. The University of North Dakota does performance-based pay top to bottom for over twenty-seven hundred employees. So the idea that this isn't happening anywhere even close to home just isn't right. And it's happening, the university president talked about it at the legislature this year, that it's an important part of how they attract and retain staff. And that's a focus that they've had at the University of North Dakota and in the North Dakota university system.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor Janser. A real quick question, Hannah and Chelsea. Is there anything, you know, middle ground, when you talk about like bonus for performance, bonus for performance incentives, anything like that that comes with budgeting, something like this, maybe doing it cost savings? Cost savings throughout the year within a department's budget can be budgeted towards performance incentives. Anything like that out there?
It's definitely a possibility. It's not something that we necessarily investigated as part of this scope of work that was focused on base pay. I would say it's less common to see strictly a bonus reward for performance. I think that generally when we're seeing annual increases that are provided to people year over year, a perk of that or something that naturally happens is it also helps people to keep pace with an evolving labor market year over year. And so if you were to have one in exchange for the other, meaning you're eligible for a bonus to reward performance, but your base pay stays the same, then typically what tends to happen is over time, you'll have employees whose base is kind of lagging the market. So but to your point, from a cost perspective, bonuses by definition are at-risk compensation, right? So there is a potential for cost savings through that. But I, I think my suggestion and best practice would still definitely be to tie that back to an annual increase. There might be a performance-based merit and maybe, I mean, typically what we recommend is annual market reviews. And so if there are any jobs that have shifted substantially in the market, you might even pair that with a market adjustment to make sure that base, which ultimately, if if we're being honest, what we're hearing loud and clear across all of our clients, regardless of industry, take-home pay, paycheck to paycheck is by far what is most important to employees right now. Probably because of some of the the changes we've seen in cost of living across the board. So, so all that to say, I think that's a possibility. It's something you could consider. But if you were to consider it, my suggestion would be to have that as kind of an addition as opposed to an exchange for annual increases.
If I may just continue, I just want to be clear that I wasn't, I wasn't suggesting to get away from the steps. I meant maintaining the steps with cost savings. We talk about over, over. We talk about over, overtaxing citizens and stuff like that, some of the budget savings that we see from our department heads. If there's cost savings at the end of the year within a depart, department, can we take two percent of that, ten percent of that for performance, you know, performance bonuses, you know, instead of going fully into the, you know, the, the pay-for-performance plan? I don't know, I'm just throwing things at the wall.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much, Hannah and Chelsea, and we'll, we have a lot to digest here and address as we go forward. So, thank you for your work and your report.
Awesome. Thank you for having us.
Bye, everyone.
Okay, we're still under the city manager's report. City manager, back to you.
I have nothing further.
Nothing further than, in fact, we will move on to four-point-two, which is the city attorney's report. City attorney.
Inter-Mayor Janzer and members of the council, I submitted a written report and I can stand for any questions if there are any.
Any questions for the city attorney? Seeing none, we'll move ahead. That brings us to item five, which is a public hearing. This is a public hearing of case number M-110, a request by Askle Group LLC for conditional approval of an eight-year property tax benefit for the rehabilitation of a commercial building located at 110 East Central Avenue. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this matter, welcome to come forward. One more time, public hearing on the 110 East Central Avenue. Seeing no, no one, what are the wishes of the council? Alderman Olson.
Yeah, thank you. I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the request as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the request as presented. Any discussion by the council? Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Just, Chris, maybe you can help. I had a quick question regarding, sorry, wrong one. Apologies.
Alderman Fuller?
Different question. I'm sorry. Okay.
If I could.
Alderman bless them.
Just, just, again, this, I think this is maybe one of the first ones, if I remember right, Brian, where we're seeing the expansion to eight years. Second one, okay, I'm here, I'm seeing two fingers from the back of the room for those watching. So, this is our second one. So, you know, I think, you know, we've had a lot of discussion, you know, Paul, we had a lot of this on our economic development committee. You know, these programs, I think, depending upon who you would ask, they're either wildly successful or they're, they're in question about whether they should exist. And the ones that typically say they're wildly successful are the ones that receive funds, whether it's this program or the facade program. And I think if you drive around downtown, I think we're all proud of our city and the way that it looks and things are, are moving in the right direction. And so, I would say that the investment that we're making is making a difference down there. I think the question that we always have to have in front of us is, is it commensurate with the, the, the strain that is putting on the everyday people that are paying the bill? And so, you know, for me, these are easy decisions each and every time this program is in place, the applicants have met the criteria and the program is on the books as of today. So, my vote will be yes, but I think this is an ongoing conversation that continues about what's the right approach to making these things happen.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Brian, real quick, my, my only question a couple months ago is we had one come before us that we'd given like eight years to finish his roof or whatever it was, and then we were putting it in place. Is there a timetable on finishing these projects just as we go forward so we understand that or not?
Community Development Director, Brian Billings.
Good evening, Mayor Janzer, members of the council, Alderman Fuller. Yes, in 2021, when we updated our Renaissance Zone Development Plan, we put a requirement in there that makes the property owner complete these, their project within three years. So, from the date of approval that the state of North Dakota grants, after, after approval tonight, I send the, all, everything down to Bismarck. Once I get a letter back from them stating that they've been approved, they have three years to get their project finished. If they need more time, they can ask for a one-year extension from the Renaissance Zone Board. And after that time period, they need an additional year, they can go, come to the city council and ask for the fifth year. But after that, they're done. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's time to vote.
The motion passed five to one with dissent from Alderman Samuelson.
All right, moving on, that brings us to number six, which is the consent items. I have been asked to pull six-point-one-nine, six-point-two-zero and six-point-two-one for individual considerations. Are there any of the other items in consent that anyone would like polled for individual discussion? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Make a motion to approve the remaining items.
Alderman Fuller makes a motion to approve the remaining items that are seconded. Second, Alderman Pittner. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
That takes us to item six-point-one-nine. This is regarding the N.D. Perz Retirement Plan, dispatch enrollment in the Public Safety Retirement Plan. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Moved by Alderman Olson.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Samuelson. Discussion. Alderman bless them.
Yeah, thank you. I had, I had a couple of these polled and, and Kelly, thanks for, thanks for making your way to the front. I appreciate that. I just wanted to talk about them a little bit. You know, I, I follow this, some of this that was going on during the legislative session and actually the second item has some of that as well. Can you, what I really want to understand is, these are options we have available to us to opt in and out of different programs. They can be very good for our employees, which I think needs to be first and foremost in our minds, but they also can come with a cost. And so, I wanted to make sure that I understood that. So, can you talk about what it will cost us to have dispatch move into the public safety program?
Absolutely. So, in looking at the numbers that my expert Monica pulled for me, and I am profoundly grateful, it would cost us as a city about thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars to move into that retirement contribution. But on the other side of that, the employees are going to save and it's an annual cost of about thirteen thousand five hundred dollars savings out of the employee's pocket.
So, if I can continue, so there's an offset that's going on there. So, the employee contribution is lower under the Perz plan and the employer contribution is higher. So, so that, I mean, really in terms of the cost to the taxpayer, it's the thirty-six-thousand-dollar number and it's, it's a nice benefit for the employee. And just, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm just going to throw a couple of the pieces that are really nice with this. Number one, because they're part of public safety, their, their, their calculation determine retirement eligibility is lower, right? So, they, they've got the opportunity to do that. And we typically do that because public safety is a high-stress, high, high-everything job, whether it's fire, it's police, it's dispatch. We, we want to make sure that we're taking care of those employees. And so, for me, while there is some additional costs here, I think this makes sense and I just wanted to make sure that everybody kind of had a, a picture of what that looked like for this plan. So, I appreciate that.
Any further discussion or questions for our HR director? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
That takes us to item six-point-two-zero. This is the N.D. Perz Retirement Plan, the opt-out of defined contribution retirement plan. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Pittner, seconded by Alderman Fuller. Discussion. Alderman bless them.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So, Kelly, the same questions here. And I know, actually, I, I know that Finance Director Lakefield was heavily involved in the bill that was behind this one and, and I, and I heard some of his arguments for why that made sense. And I think in general terms, that's the case again. I mean, we already have a defined contribution program. So, why, why stick with the one in Perz and make it all so complicated? Why not look at options that would allow us to, to move into one plan? At the same time, again, I want to make sure I understand the cost. So, what does that look like for this program?
Thank you. I'm actually going to defer to Monica on this one. She's got a way better understanding. Alderman bless them and mayor, thank you. The cost is going to be about the same to the city. It's actually slightly lower for the city contribution, but the benefits that would come by opting out of the N.D. Perz for D.C. twenty-five or defined contribution plan would be that we actually currently have a 401A plan, which is nearly identical, but we run it ourselves. So, we would be able to have a little more control over that. Another benefit would be any employees who terminated employment with the city, if they're not vested, right now, all of that money goes back into N.D. Perz and they keep it. We would have the ability to retain some of those funds as well as give some more flexibility to our employees and have control of that plan.
Thank you. So, if I can continue, so I, I think among both of these items, you know, the other one's slightly more cost, but great options for our staff. And this one is actually a slight winner on the dollar side. So, fabulous work, just want to say that. Thank you.
One thing I do want to add, a comment you'd made earlier about rolling all of these up into one, we would actually just be not enrolling employees, new employees, in this N.D. Perz specific plan. It wouldn't eliminate any of the other plans that we currently have.
Okay, any, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. All right, any further discussion or from the Alderman? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Next is item six-point-two-one. This is a budget amendment related to the purchase of two wireless microphones for the council chambers. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Moved by Alderman Olson.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Pittner. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman bless them.
Thank you. So, this one, I mean, really, I think we're all in agreement that we want to up the capability of the system because I think we've run into that a few times just in the chamber here where it'd be better off to have these. I, I really just had two questions. First was, is there, is this one, is there a threshold, I guess, first of all, where we don't need to do this budget amendment? That's my first part. And then the second part really is, is it better practice for us to put that in a twenty-six budget, pay for it then and move forward that way? Again, I, I'm not too hung up on the dollars and I really would like to get it done, but it sort of starts to set precedent about the types of things we do this time of year versus planning for a budget. So, just thought I'd throw that out.
Who would like to answer that?
I can try.
Okay.
On the second question, it is my understanding that we have twenty-five hundred dollars budgeted for the back computer. It's my understanding that we were going to try and get AVI up here anyway to do firmware. I don't believe they have anyone here, so we would be paying for travel for them to come. So, we thought, why not lump it together so we're only paying for the travel once? We could definitely put it into next year. It seems like we're becoming more and more into, you know, the less formal meetings, but still trying to broadcast and do the things that we want to do, hence why we put it on for this year. And Dave can probably preach to this, but the reason, there is no threshold, if it's not allocated funds, if it wasn't planned in the budget, we have to do a budget amendment, even though it would fall within the budget because we're using some savings from insurance. I believe Bravera had some savings this year.
And I certainly appreciate that. I think that's good. I don't know if Harold, if you need to add anything or...
Mr. Mayor, Alderman bless him to answer your first question about thresholds and, you know, when is it appropriate to bring to council versus when it's not? What we're trying to strike here, and staff have been talking about this, Dave and, I, I would say his spare time, and I don't think he has any spare time, but we've been talking about updating a budget amendment policy as far as where staff has the authority to approve budget amendments versus when it has to come to council. The balance we're trying to hit is, one is transparency, right? And two is, when is it appropriate for staff to make those adjustments and, and meet council intent versus when it's a significant change that needs more due diligence? It makes us stop and think about whether or not we should do that budget amendment before we do it. So, one example I would give is, in particular, if the council gives a department a specific budget and we want to move something from one light item to another, in some cases, that makes sense for us to be able to do that and others it may not. For example, we don't want staff taking and saying, we can do without a capital purchase of a vehicle this year and in addition, in replacement, we're going to spend that money on adding a new position, right? Because we don't want to take a one-time expense to add a, a long-term expense. That needs to go through a process that I believe needs to come before the council that we're in agreement of that. And so, trying to figure out a policy that balances those issues is, is where we're having the challenge and is, and a significant amount of conversation. But we do agree with the process of determining where there are thresholds, that we as staff have the authority to do that. But we want a policy that we can present to you on how we're going to do that and when and why we're going to approve that. So, the council believes that there's transparency of the process, that we're making that decision in a professional, reasonable manner. And when does it escalate to come into the council so that it's public?
Yep. And if I could, Mark.
Go ahead.
And I appreciate that, Harold. And I think, I think actually this one fits exactly perfect where it is. I mean, consent makes perfect sense. It's just over-analizers like me that bring them up and want to talk about them. So, I mean, that's, but I, again, I think, I think this is a great way to do that and I, I just, I just wanted to get those couple little pieces.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we had, we have a motion and a second, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, moving on, that takes us to section seven, which is our action items. And the first is item seven-point-one, which is the Pathfinder Services of North Dakota agreements. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Discussion. Alderman Fuller.
Hey, Chris, thanks for coming up this time. Sorry about that. My, my only quick question on this is with this, even though Pathfinder Services is going to be leasing it from us, in the event, barring any foreseen circumstances, they don't make it and we shut down services because we don't have the funding to keep it going, are we on the hook to the federal government for anything at that point? Do you know?
Mayor Janzer and Alderman Fuller, what we would do is we would notify HUD of that decision and we would release another RFP, looking for another organization who may be interested in running the facility. We could also look at a different approach to it, separating out the different plotted lands. So, there could be options at that time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Chris while he's here? Thank you. Any other, any other discussion on the item? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
That brings us to seven-point-two, the columbarium section bid approval and budget amendment. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Moved by Alderman Olson.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Fuller. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman bless them.
Harold or, or Brian, could one of you guys, can you help, can you walk me through a little bit how we got from what I think we approved in the budget, which I thought was essentially one section? And I think this is actually four now. How that worked? How did the bidders know what was going on? How did all that come about?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman bless them. Originally, yes, we did in fact budget for a single section replacement based off of the numbers we were seeing for, from previous years for sales, basically. After looking at it and looking at the direction we were going with, with future budgets, looking at potential savings by doing multiple purchases versus one, because again, you'd have to pay for installation as well as additional costs, it was determined that we could move forward, try to match the current aesthetics we have there with the current columbarium section that's there with the new sections that we're going to be putting in. Now, the budget amendment portion of it was pulled from the IT maintenance. Currently, we're dealing with a ledger-type system, paperwork only. Cemetery was working towards transitioning to a software-based system to track work order maintenance, inspection logs, everything else, versus the ledger-type system. I don't think that Cemetery is where they need to be at this point. I think that is something that we can prioritize on a lower rung and focus more on making sure the aesthetics for the columbarium, as well as making sure that the niches are available for, for the demand that we're actually seeing as well.
So, if I can continue? Okay, so that, the budget amendment portion of this, for me, that, that starts to get a little bit complicated as we look to the future. I would tend to agree with you, when we went through the budget process, I remember thinking distinctly, and I remember, I think, out at Public Works, having a discussion about what software was needed, what types of things would it do for us to make sure that we were providing the service to the public we're intending to provide? And I think you kinda said it well there. This does not take away all the reasons that we wanted that. So, while this budget amendment uses funds that were allocated for that, it doesn't relieve the question that was there that the software solved. And so, we've gotta weigh that a little bit because this, in my mind, becomes new spend at that point, at least pulling spend forward, if nothing else. A different question then for you, so as I look through the bids, and again, I haven't studied through the responses, I would think that you'd have to get in there, as I look at the two Kyber bids, do you have an idea of what, what brought the winning bid down as low as it did? It's funny to me because when I look at type of construction, the full granite is less than the aluminum frame granite exterior, and that seems strange that it's backwards, but there must be something I'm missing there, can you comment on that at all?
Mayor Janzer, Alderman Blessam, that's exactly what it is. The aluminum framing within the structure itself is actually a driving factor for all bidders. All of the additional bids that actually came in much higher than Kyber 2, all had aluminum framing, which was the reasons why they were a higher cost. I was trying to find out exactly what that meant as far as what it did to the structure or anything else, and none of the companies could provide any additional insight into it. It was just an additional cost associated with manufacturing that product.
I appreciate that, and if I could, just, just one last thing, this is a little bit of a foreshadowing towards the, you know, the local preference discussion that'll be coming towards the end of our meeting tonight. But Kyber, you know, you look at some, certainly you can see names there that people would recognize around town. You know, and they put in their best bid and they hope that they win, and then that doesn't happen necessarily. Kyber is a Canadian company, so, you know, they were, it's great that we're able to get the taxpayers the savings all the way down at 23,000 per unit, but that is a good kinda precursor for where we're headed in the discussions later tonight because it's these types of purchasing decisions that I think we've gotta, we've gotta be mindful of as, you know, as we move forward. And so, hopefully, good value for the, for the taxpayer and sets us on a path that hopefully takes care of our needs six to 10 years, I think, is what you guys are thinking?
Pushing closer to 10 years, yes, with the current demand rates we're seeing now.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Brian?
Thank you, sir.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
The motion passed unanimously.
That brings us to item 7.3, which is the MI-8/9 alignment consent and acquisition approval, and I believe we have a presentation on that, go ahead, Jason.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, so, this process that we embarked on a few months ago is very similar to the, to the process we went through last year with the MI-4. So, MI-8 and 9, that's the Burdick Bridge replacement, and that is MI-8, and then MI-9 is the tieback levy that runs to the south, the high ground from there. When we started the design, we started with the original PER alignment, similar to the, to the MI-4 discussion. As we got into that project, we, we've noticed that there's probably some cost savings by putting in different features, which ultimately resulted in some acquisitions again. So, with me tonight, Ryan Ackerman, he's gonna review kinda the SRJB perspective on flood control, and then Jerry Benz with Houston Engineering will go through the process of how we identified or designed the project and identified the acquisitions and how we got to where we are tonight, so.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Ryan Ackerman with Ackerman Esfold, I work as the administrator for the Suris River Joint Board. Just a little overview of what we're gonna cover here. Basically, look at the Miles River Enhanced Flood Protection Project from an overview standpoint. I'll be looking at things and presenting things really from a 30,000-foot level, and after that, I'll turn it over to Jerry Benz to, with Houston Engineering, to really get into the details of MI-8 and 9 and some of the nuances associated with that phase of the project. We'll talk about the path forward here, and then of course, take your questions if you have any. So, again, some of this may be repetitive information for folks, but we think it's always good to kinda start with, start with the baseline here of what we're trying to combat. So, the blue shading in the map that's shown on the screen is indicative of what FEMA has preliminarily published as their future regulatory floodplain, meaning that any home within that shading that has a federally-backed mortgage would be required to purchase flood insurance. This is also, largely coincides with the 2011 floodplain as well. 2011 flood was deeper, but the floodplain that you see in the screen here is basically budding up against those valley walls, so as we get deeper, you don't see the floodplain expand significantly in plan view, but the depth does, of course, change. Okay, so, just quick status update on where we're at with the various milestones. Again, milestone one is west and north Minot, starting at Tierra Cita Vallejo, which is west of the Highway 83 bypass, and continuing to Fourth Avenue Northeast, approximately a half a mile east of Sammy's Pizza. So, the figures that are on the screen, shown in black, are phases that are complete or under construction. All these phases are substantially complete, actually, there's a little bit of work remaining on phase MI-5, but the rest of this work is, is done. The remaining connecting piece of that is the Maple Diversion. This is the piece where we have a federal partner. The Corps of Engineers is a partner in this project, it's been authorized, we're in the design process with them. It is very likely that the construction of the diversion will start sometime in late 2026. When that work occurs, and when that work is finished, following approximately a five-year construction season, that regulatory floodplain or anticipated regulatory floodplain is gonna shift from what you see on the screen here to, to this. So, essentially, that first milestone removes about 60% of our valley residents from that regulatory floodplain and gives them flood protection up to the flood of record, which is what we experienced in 2011. Casting our focus now to the future, work is progressing on milestone two, so there's a lot of construction happening right now in the area of Roosevelt Park and Zoo. This is associated with milestone number two, these are phases MI-6 and MI-7. And then the phases that continue to the south are phases MI-8 and 9, and that's really what we're gonna be talking about today. When this milestone is complete, so following the construction of phases MI-8 and 9, that floodplain is again gonna shrink, pulling out an additional 15% of Minot Valley residents from that floodplain, including Eastwood Park could be probably the most recognizable neighborhood in that area. The third milestone then is East Minot, has several phases. None of these are currently under final design. Ultimately, the master plan calls for removing the, these areas from the, from the floodplain as shown, so our future floodplain is gonna be, as indicated, on, on this map here. So, again, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Jerry Benz with Houston Engineering. He can talk a little bit about the particulars associated with phases MI-8 and 9. Those are outlined here in red on this map, just to give you a little bit of context, but I'll stand by for, for questions after Mr. Benz is done.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Benz.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'll pick up from there, so on phases eight and nine, this is just an aerial photo from the 2011 flood here, so on the top of the screen would be Burdick there, kinda the yellow line that, that crosses, and then Eighth Avenue, so, you can see it, it's a little bit tough to see, but you can see the brown in the background, just indicating what was inundated at 2011, so as we start talking about protection, you just get a little bit of a sense as far as what the neighborhood looked like in 2011. So, as we started the design, as Ryan spoke to, we really started from alignments that were presented in the master plan for the flood control project, so the preliminary engineers report. That report through this area did lay out an alignment that would have largely been levee through the whole neighborhood, so we would pick up from the levee on the north side of Burdick, in the zoo area, west of the river, carry a levy all the way down across Eighth Avenue, and ultimately tie into High Ground to the south of there, about a quarter mile to the south. So, that really was the alignment that we started from, as we started going towards detailed design. Obviously, as we work towards detailed design, we have a lot more information, we have better survey data, we have better hydraulics, we have geotechnical data, those types of things to help us in making a better decision as far as detailed design, so, as we started working into that, we really looked at options, I would say, or alternatives in two areas, that we thought we could potentially make some changes to the, to the alignment that could result in cost savings. The first of those was really directly to the south of Burdick. So, again, you can see the existing Burdick Expressway in the background there. The new alignment of the roadway would allow for the new bridge to be constructed to the south of there, ultimately allowing us to construct most of the bridge during the time that traffic remains on Burdick, only needing to shut down Burdick when we would really tie into that new alignment. That didn't change very, very much, a little bit further to the south in our alignments, but generally followed the original concept of the, of the preliminary plan. From there, what you're seeing on the screen is, is mostly the preliminary plan with some adjustments to just account for geotechnical requirements as far as how close could we put the levy to the river, those types of things. When we did that under this proposed alignment, really the only change was one additional acquisition, so the acquisitions to the, to the south side of Burdick, the commercial properties there, as well as the residential properties to the north of Fifth Avenue. Those were, would have all been proposed for acquisition in the original PER. It's really just one additional property to the south of Fifth, between Fifth and Sixth, between the two cul-de-sacs there, would be the only additional property that we were proposing to acquire with this option. This ultimately, I'll just, just let you know in advance, this is ultimately our recommended alignment, but we did, we did look at some variations from that. The variation's really focused on, could we, could we do some things to preserve some of the acquisitions that were planned? Because people had moved into, back into those homes following the floods, had been living their lives there, so we were, we were looking at alternatives to try to avoid some of those acquisitions. The first alternative that we looked at, essentially put a flood wall along the east side with a cul-de-sac to the north of Fifth. In doing that, we could actually save for residential properties, but as we started weighing the, the cost savings of the residential properties versus the additional costs that would have been associated with the flood wall versus levy and the roadway construction, it actually would have resulted in an increased cost of just shy of $2 million, so. So, we discarded that option, we did look at a second variation. The second variation would have essentially pushed the road to the north. Instead of having the cul-de-sac, actually brought the road out towards Corbett Field there on the north side. The, the main advantage we were trying to get to there by having flood wall was that we could also preserve the, the apartment complex that's at that location, further reducing our, our acquisition costs. Even by doing that, we were seeing that about $700,000 more than just the base plan of levy and acquisitions through that area, so, we stayed with the original levy and acquisition alignment in our, in our preferred option. The second area that we spent quite a bit of time looking at alternatives to was on the far south end, so on the screen here, on the north edge of the screen is Eighth Avenue South. So, the original preliminary engineers report alignment would have carried that levy to the south. It actually ties into High Ground there, about two-thirds of the way down the screen there, that's why the levy stops, the ground comes up there at that property. So, we looked, we worked out alignments to try to make a levy fit in there. We actually worked with the property owner to the south there, did some staking in their property to make sure that if we were to put a levy there, that it would still facilitate the activities that they use in that property. Wanted to make sure that we had an alignment that, that ultimately would be suitable to allow them to stay in place. We did come up with an alignment that would work there. From there, though, in order to, to put a levy through that, that reach and across that property, there's some other costs that you wouldn't necessarily expect, which is, to the south of there and across from the railroad, there's a large area of drainage from the city that actually drains down through there, crosses under the railroad, and flows out in the green space between the, between the trucking business there and the, the food business to the north. So, in the preliminary engineers report, as well as in our findings, what we found was, we would actually have to divert that water along, along railway, or along Valley Street, sorry, off to the east and bringing it around the protection. Otherwise, we would have to install a larger pump station there to pump. So, there's some other costs that come into play in, in providing the protection per the original PER. We presented that in our 30% design, as shown on the screen, had some discussions with joint board membership, the rest of our kinda design coordination team, and as a result, looked at a second option. The second option for that area essentially stops the protection on the north side of Eighth Avenue, turns it to the west over to 15th Street, at a point there that we can tie in that's above the hundred-year elevation, and then ultimately includes accommodations, which I'll show you in the preferred plan at the end, to extend an emergency levy along Eighth Avenue in the event that we get floods that are far greater than, or several feet above the hundred-year. By going to this alignment, as we show here, we could, we could recognize about $4.5 million in cost savings to the project as a whole, and I guess for that reason, this ultimately became our recommended plan in the 60%. I do feel like it's worth showing, you know, what does that mean for the, for the properties to the south? So, there's two maps included in the, in the presentation here. The left one would show what the hundred-year floodplain looks like across those properties to the south, and the map to the right shows what a repeat of 2011 would look like to the properties to the south. So, both of the properties on the south side are above the hundred-year. One of them would be impacted by 2011, and that, that was experienced in 2011. The images here are just images from the 2011 flood event, when that property of the south was still part of the Cloverdale facility. The building that's inundated there with kinda the blue or gray roof there has since been removed post-flood, and you can see how protection was put in place for the building that does exist there, still on the south side, so. To end of the day, I would say really our, our basis for, for the change here was, was economic in nature. It was the $4.5 million savings that came with the revised plan, so. After those, I guess those two areas were looked at in detail, that ultimately brought us to what we proposed for a 60% design alignment here in May. The alignment shown on the screen here, I have some detailed slides, but I think I'll skip the detailed slides and just kinda talk about this at a high level, so. So, the overall plan at the 60% level and the plan that we're looking for concurrence from the, from the council tonight on is shown on the screen, so the gray, that I can, can I, point or not? Nope, so, the, the roadway there, I guess the first part of it is really the, the raising of Burdick Expressway and a new bridge to the south of where the bridge is today. Just to give you an idea of context, the, the bridge deck there will be raised about 13 feet from where it is today. So, in order to bring the deck up that much, we have pretty long transitions for the roadway to get up to that elevation, coming in from the east and the west. Those are identified on the image there with the kinda crosshatch gray with the roadway, so you can see, Expressway would be, the Burdick Expressway would be pushed to the south where the road comes across there. In order to allow that to happen, on the east side, north of the, the new alignment to, to Burdick Expressway, we would actually construct a frontage road to the north of the new embankment there. That frontage road would be, the north curb of that frontage road would really be the north curb of the properties along that area that exists today. So, basically, because the road gets raised up there, they would no longer- So basically, because the road gets raised up there, they would no longer be able to access their driveways directly onto Burdick. So they would come onto a frontage road and then be funneled down to to the access shown there on the east side. So that handles the transportation corridor through there. You will see on the east side that we do show some levy to the south of the roadway and a little bit of a a tieback levy on the northeast side of the bridge there. Those do not provide any sort of protection or meaning as far as Milestone Two, but they were incorporated so that, as Ryan pointed out, for Milestone Three, that we would have protection adjacent to Burdick constructed such that we wouldn't have to come back in and tear up Burdick in the future. So they'd basically be tie-in points for the future levy system. That's what the the levy is about there. We would also do some rerouting of the sanitary line because the sanitary pump station that's located adjacent to to Burdick there would would go out of service in Milestone Three. So we're routing that up to its point just to prepare for Milestone Three in the future. So everything you see to the east is really in preparation to ensure that we don't duplicate costs on future Milestone Three improvements. On the west side, then, for protection, protection through is fairly simple. It's a levy adjacent to the river there. The levy would circle out through the previous mobile home park that's down there. There would be a pond located there in blue. The pond would allow stormwater to come to a point, be slowly pumped into the river to reduce costs on our on our pump station at that location. And then, as I explained, the the levy would then turn on the south side of the of the pond and tie in just to the east of of Fifteenth Street. From there, during times, I'm just going to skip ahead, during times that we would have an event that would exceed the hundred year level, we would incorporate provisions such that an emergency levy could tie into that permanent levy shown in pink here and be built along the along the city right away, basically the north half of the roadway through there in the event that we get a flood greater than the hundred year. Our tie-in point, I believe, is about three foot above the hundred year. So it really is going to take a pretty significant flood in order to to need to do that. We felt like that was a a worthwhile option to consider. It prevented us from carrying that permanent protection to the west further, acquiring additional homes there, and knowing that in history it would have only needed to be constructed one time. And for the most part, it holds back two to three feet of water. So it's fairly low risk. So. So that that is the alignment. The current construction estimate for the alignments relatively large. A big chunk of that comes from the reconstruction of Burdick Bridge, as well as the embankments that come up on each side. But about fifty-two point eight million, as proposed in the sixty percent with the alignment shown. What we have done, I'd say, in the recent last couple of months since the sixty percent was published is we did have individual property owner meetings with the residential properties that would be acquired. Again, one of those would be in addition to what was proposed in the PER. So we met with those property owners individually. We then held a public meeting here in early June, invited all residents from the surrounding area, took oral comments, written comments. I believe the written comments were included in the in the council packet. Ultimately, here tonight, hoping that we could get concurrence on the alignment and, as Jason mentioned, approval to proceed with the acquisitions, the residential acquisitions. And then our intention is to go to the Sura River Joint Board. I showed July eleventh on here, but since July eleventh, there'll be a a virtual meeting for them. That will actually happen on August seventh. At which point, we would hope that the Joint Board would concur with the alignment and that would allow us to continue towards final design here over the winter with hopes that we would have a project ready if funding was available for spring twenty twenty-six construction. So. I have a couple of numbers in there on acquisitions. I just want to be maybe clear that with the acquisitions that are shown, let's see the best map, probably this alternative map. I think Jason is actually asking for permission to acquire four additional residential properties. Three of those were proposed in the original PER. As I've mentioned, one additional one since the PER. Just to be clear where those properties are, they would be the three residential properties just to the north of Fifth Avenue and the one residential property indicated there between Fifth and Sixth Avenue that's highlighted in green. So I believe the commercial properties to the north there have previously been approved by by the council for for acquisitions. So. That I will pause and certainly take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Benz? Go ahead, Alderman, bless him.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. So the one, I I think maybe some of us got a question from one of the commercial property owners further south with a new alignment, and now I'm finally understanding fully what what the concerns are. My my main question is, is, you know, there's a transaction that occurred in July of two thousand and twenty-three. What would the what would the guy purchasing that land have known at the time? What decision was he making based on what he could see publicly about what our plan was through that area?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, bless him. So you said two thousand and twenty-three?
Yep.
So in two thousand and twenty-three, I would say the alignment that would have been available would have been the alignment from the this map here. And it's a little bit difficult to see. The the left one's kind of an overview. The right one's actually a CAD drawing. So I think at that point, what you would have saw is that there there was a levy proposed across that property to come to the south and tie into high ground. If you dug into the plans a little further, you would see that there was certainly an attempt to try to bring the the water around that property. So. Is that, does that answer the question?
Yeah, I think so. I I don't know if it fixes my concern, but it answers the question, I think. So he, I guess in my mind, he would have made a decision based on expecting the, at least the building he was purchasing to be protected. You know, I I guess that's of concern to me, but I don't know that that we have a lot of different options here that we're looking at.
Any other questions of Mr. Benz? Okay, I guess stand by, maybe. I I believe the there was one property owner in in this section that had contacted and wanted to speak. Apparently was not able to be available for the public meeting that was held. And maybe this is the man who's coming forward now. So.
Too complicated for me. Mr. Mayor, Council, Tim Smith, I'm the owner of the Cloverdale property. So, Councilman Bless, I'm actually, I entered into that transaction with Ron Lecout in two thousand and eighteen. So we did a, it was owner finance, and then I bought it out early twenty twenty-three and it was filed. So my understanding, when I bought the property, I mean, because actually I leased it from Ron, we moved in there in two thousand and fourteen, was the property would always be protected. So then, you know, we've been working with Jerry and Houston for a while, you know, talking about the plan. And the plan looked great. And I asked for zero compensation. I'm like, great, you're going to protect me? You don't need to pay me anything. So my problem is, you know, I'm in the city limits. My road is a city street that's gravel, that the city doesn't maintain. I put the gravel on it, I grade it. You know, I pay fourteen thousand dollars a year in property tax. Then the other thing is, truthfully, I tried to keep a low profile. I came to North Dakota in two thousand and eight. I'm an oil and gas service company, we're a trucking company, we haul frac sand. You know, we'll do a hundred and twenty million dollars in sales this year that's headquartered out of Minot, North Dakota. And I chose to come here. I could have gone anywhere else, but I chose to come to Minot. You know, everybody was going to Watford City, going to Dickinson, going to Williston, but I said, Minot's the place to be. And so, you know, I have fifty-four full-time employees. My average salary is seventy-eight thousand dollars. We have a significant economic impact on Minot and Ward County. Like Dakota Trucking Farm, Walworths, if we're not their top customer, we're probably number two. I mean, I hate to say it, but when I look around along the river and just businesses in Minot in general, there are not very many my size, and we continue to grow. I'll probably grow another twenty, thirty percent this year, and we'll hire more people. And I took a vacant property that Ron bought because he didn't want a neighbor. And it was just going to sit vacant and be ugly. And so, you know, I made, I brought my family here. I've hired all local people. We buy here, we spend money here. We make a big difference to this community. And I don't think that the Joint Board or Houston or anybody was aware of that. And so I think the recommendation is pretty short sighted because I'd like to know who else makes an impact like I do in this community. And we're not going to protect me? But why should I stay there? I operate in eight states. I have an office in Douglas, Wyoming. I have an office in Monahans, Texas. I could move my main office to Texas, buy a house, become a Texas citizen, and guess what? Not pay any state tax. I could save myself a ton of money. But some things aren't all about money for me. It's about doing the right thing. I'm pretty old fashioned, and I've made a commitment to North Dakota. It's been good to my family. So I just struggle with this recommendation because I do not think it's well informed. I think there's a lot that they have not shared and have not looked at the impact and what the cost associated with that. I mean, my wife's gonna say a few words. She knows a lot more than I do. But yeah, there's, there's a lot more to the story, that the cost. If we flood, because all this protection is going to push a ton of water on my property, I'm smart enough to know that somebody's going to be liable for that. And I know I'll win. I mean, I'll just tell you, in my conversations, there was a city employee made the comment, well, if we flood his property, I guess he can sue us. Well, I can tell you what. You know, I've been extremely successful, and I have the means to do it. But the funny thing is, the way the state law is, when I win, you guys will pay my attorney's fees. There's zero risk. There's all the gain. And so I think, when I say it's very short sighted, it'd be better protect my property and save everybody money upfront and a lot of, a lot of bad blood. I just don't, you know, like I say, I tell my boys and tell all my employees, the only way to do things is the right way. If we're not going to do it right, why would we do it at all? And this just doesn't seem right to me. If you guys have any questions, I'll let my wife, I'll let the smart one get up here.
Thank you, guys.
Always good to follow the Texans. So, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, my name is Jody Smith, and I'm obviously Mr. Smith's wife. And so I just, again, I'm here to reiterate a lot of of what my husband had to say. Again, he moved up here in two thousand and eight, and he's pretty humble about it. And he moved up here with three trucks and started working out of Minot. And we followed him because he said this was a great place to be. And today, we run about three hundred and fifty trucks a day. And again, we've tried to maintain a a lower profile, and I think when you look up there, the cost savings, I don't know that that is an accurate reflection of the economic benefit that we bring to the community. And if there, we are put in a position where we would have to relocate, I understand that there's the option to build a temporary levy. That temporary levy would shut our business down. A temporary levy would be put in place so that we could not run our trucks and park them on that yard as we need to because we run so many trucks. We also have a bay, if you're familiar with the Cloverdale Meat Packing Plant, that's one of the reasons we purchased it, because that's one of our mechanic shops. We will not be able to get those trucks in and out of those bays while that levy is up there. For every day that our business is down, we estimate it costs about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the short term. And in the long term, if we lost some of our permanent jobs for our customers, there'd be a greater impact. And it would be a conversation that he and I would have to have about whether or not we maintain, again, the the headquarters of this business here, we relocate to another community. Cloverdale was there. They did self-protection. I think that Mr. Benz had brought up that map at that time. The only reason that building wasn't flooded is because there was a levy built around that at that time. Again, certainly we can do that to save the property, but that's not going to help our business. My husband has not ever asked for any handouts. He's a pretty proud man like that. And so alls we're asking is for that levy to be built. And then, as Mr. Benz had had kind of alerted you to, there is going to have to be some re-grading of that where our trucks do park, just due to some drainage issues. I can say, we did not have a meeting regarding the change in the alignment. We were notified via an email that the change in alignment was occurring, so we never had a one-on-one meeting in May. Again, we were not able to attend the June meeting because we do operate in eight states. My husband's on the road frequently and was not able to attend that, which is why we're here opposing the new alignment options for you. I am, because of the significant economic impact that this would have to our business, I am asking respectfully for you not to approve the alignment of Section Nine. I am asking for a written explanation as the exclusion of our property above and beyond the four point five million dollar savings. Because again, the economic impact of shutting our business down, even for twenty-one days, by the time you build a levy, you mitigate the flood, and you take that levy down as seven million dollars. And that twenty-one days is a lot more than the four and a half million dollars that it would cost to be able to protect our our property. I am also asking for a meeting with the project engineers and the board leadership to explore alternative flood protection options. And I am asking for a reassessment of the economic impact in the current plan beyond the direct cost savings, four and a half million dollars for our property. Again, I understand that there's a budget. I work for the state, and I understand everything comes with a budget. But if we had been notified that there had been an option to exclude our property during the legislative session, we certainly would have called our legislators. We would have gone down and testified, and we would have advocated for more funding to come to this project to be able to protect our property for an additional four and a half million dollars. So I do stand for any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mrs. Smith? Alderman, bless him.
Thank you for coming up. I I just kind of wanted to clarify, whether it's you or your husband, what I was saying before. So it sounds like the decision that was made by you guys was in two thousand and eighteen. And you made a decision based on the best information available. And that's what this, what I'm learning is this entire project is about what's the best information we have at the time that we make these types of decisions. But all of the information up until, really until this plan always said that property was protected, from the very first PER all the way through the entire process. So you chose to build over a hundred million dollar company in our community based on that plan?
Yeah, so, member bless him, that is correct. And again, we we purchased the property, we've put over a million dollars in improvements into that property so that we could operate our company out of that property. And it's fully our intention to stay there. Again, we've hired some great people. We've hired their family members. As my husband noted, our family is here in North Dakota. Our kids actually went to Bishop Bryan for several years until I relocated down to Bismarck for a state position. But we're, we're vested into this community. We want to continue to stay vested in this community. And the decisions that we've made, the business decisions we've made, have been continuously based upon the information that we had at the time. I I stand back from a more of a state perspective, and I look at how much money the state is investing in entrepreneurs. And we have hundreds of millions of dollars that the state is trying to get entrepreneurs to move to our state and to uplift the entrepreneurs within our state. The Legacy Fund has over four hundred and fifty million dollars dedicated to this alone. We came into this state before there was a light shone on this. We've worked very hard. We've rode the ups and downs. We did not vacate when others left. There's been some rough times over the past fifteen years that my husband's been here, right? The oil and gas industry has not always been thriving. We did not leave. We did not lay off or fire any one of our employees during the COVID turndown. It would have cost us a lot less money if we had, but we're so vested in our employees as being a part of our family that we have continuously supported them through this effort. So I look at this as almost like an affront to the state, where you want those entrepreneurs to come to the state. You want them to set up shop in the various communities, and you want to invest in them. And when we say, hey, protect our property, like you've told us you would protect it for the past fourteen years, and the past thirty days, there's a change that occurs, but that change was never discussed with this. We were never included in those conversations. Alls we're asked is to. We were never included in those conversations. All's we're asked is to write a letter and provide public comment without a full understanding of the implications that would have on our business. I just, I think it could have been handled better.
Any other questions for Mrs. Smith? Okay, thank you, ma'am. What are the wishes of the council?
I, Mark, thank you. I, I guess I'd just like to make a, a comment here. So for the last year, I've sat on this council, and I've railed against the cost of everything that's been coming down the board, how it's, it's too much. We've been spending too much. You know, I think our, our flood control roughly started at about a billion dollars, and we're gonna end somewhere around a billion five, a billion six. And I'm all for saving money. But I mean, when we're talking about a four and a half million dollar savings for the people, our share of that is thirty-five percent. I get that. But we have a business owner that has come to this community for eight years at least. He's been told that, hey, we're gonna protect you. We're gonna protect you. He's invested in his property millions of dollars or a million dollars, as they said. And then we changed the plan at the last minute and say, sorry, you're on your own. Of all the times that I've sat up here and said, we shouldn't spend the money, I'm gonna sit here and say this time, we should spend the money. It's the right thing to do. It's what we've told him we would do for over eight years. How do we go ahead and change that now and leave him hanging and his business and everything else? I, I, it just, this is one of those common sense, let's do the right things moments that we as a council have to face. So, thank you.
Alderman Olson.
Yeah, thank you. So knowing what Mr. Benz shared with us, that this would not be coming before the SRJB until their August meeting, it would be my intention to now make a motion to table this and give them a few weeks to see if they can come up with a better plan, meet with the Smiths, and come back to us either at our next meeting or first meeting in August. So I would make a motion to table this.
Is there a second? Uh, move the second that we table, table the motion.
Just to clarify, do you want to put one of the options in here for when to bring it back so that we know? Jason, is there?
I, I guess a question would be, is two weeks enough?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Olson. Uh, yeah, I think coming back in two weeks would be fine. I mean, we did hear a few things tonight that might affect that cost difference as well, because certainly in the, in the four and a half million dollar estimate, our assumption was that we would, we would have to acquire some property from the Smiths in order to build that levy in there. I know that that will change the cost. It'll certainly have some impact on the cost. So, yeah, we'd, we'd be happy to meet with them and bring back more information.
Okay.
So that is part of my motion then, the next meeting.
All right. All right. Anything further?
Yeah, it's finally.
Paul?
Yep. No, I just, yes.
Oh, oh, the second. Okay, okay. You guys were talking. I didn't, I didn't catch that. Okay. Any further discussion? Alderman Samuelson.
I would, I'd just like to make a comment. I don't live very far from the Smiths' business, and I, I was flooded. We chose not to rebuild our house for three years until there was a plan where they were gonna do a bypass. Originally, when the first map came out, it showed a dike right over the top of our house. So we waited. I can't imagine what it would be like now if they decide not to build that bypass behind my house after we rebuilt it, and I would have to get rid of it. So I have some sympathy for the Smiths. I have some mixed emotions, but I, I think to look at the best plan that we can for their business, I think is prudent here.
Any further comments?
Mark, if I could.
Alderman Blessam.
Thank you. And Jason, maybe for you, just kind of a political aspect to this. So one of the things in the, in the proposed alignment, um, you know, I remember, I think I remember when we were having the discussion around the library area, that there was big angst about designing in temporary levies as a part of our flood protection plan, and that the state would look at that and say, look, we're funding this. What in the world are you doing? Is this different because it's above the plane? Is that the difference here in what this alignment shows?
I'd probably defer to Jerry on that one as, as we went through that. I know we had that discussion.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll, I'll just go back. I'll just bring you back to the figure. I believe you're spot on is really to what you're pointing to. So in the, sorry, I didn't get to the right spot. Didn't spend a lot of time pointing out elevations on here, but just to give you a, a little better perspective on the emergency protection. So, so there's a profile at the bottom of the screen. It's gonna be real hard, hard for the audience to see there. The, the blue, there's a blue line on there that's called out as the hundred year. So we would not need to do anything until we exceeded the hundred year by just over three feet. So we would be able to provide accredited flood protection without ever building an emergency levy because we would be providing a hundred year level protection to the, to the residents to the north. It would only be in events greater than that. So we're, we're talking in events probably greater than, you know, thirteen, fourteen thousand CFS before we ever would need the emergency levy, which makes it just very, very infrequent. So the plan that you're seeing on the screen has been shared with the Corps of Engineers, who ultimately is, is kind of our primary permitting entity that we have to, to appease. And in discussion with them, they have no concerns with emergency closure at that elevation.
And so, Mark, if I could, just, just, just to finish with that then. So under this, those homes that are just directly north of the Pink Levy, even back further west, those would not be subject to the federal maps. They would be, they would not be taking on the additional burdens because they're by plan above the threshold. Is that correct?
That's correct. Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam. So the, the image here is probably the best one to, to answer your question there. Alderman Blessam. So the blue on the left side here, uh, so the blue that's shown on the left image is what would be impacted during a hundred year level if there was no levy. So, so you can see that we actually tie in the ground that's well above the hundred year there. So if our, if our protection was only provided to the hundred year, we could actually stop even short of where we're showing here.
Okay. Any further questions? The motion is to table for two weeks to allow the parties to do some further work and come back. Seeing no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
All right, moving on. The next item is number seven point four, and that is the Public Comment Personal Appearances Policy Resolution. And I'm gonna let the city attorney just kinda take us through where we, why we're, why we're having this item.
Sure. Thank you, interim mayor Janzer. Members of the council, so this last legislative session, the state enacted a new section to the North Dakota Century Code that requires local governing boards to have a public comment period on each of their regular meeting agendas. So attached to Senate Bill twenty-one eighty, that kind of sets forth in more detail the language of that law, the Code of Ordinances for the city currently provides for personal appearances. So we're halfway there. To meet the minimum requirements of the bill, though, we have to continue allowing for those public comment appearances, and we have to develop a policy regarding public comment rules for regular meetings. So at minimum, what we have to do is the individual addressing the council has to provide in writing the individual's name and address. That address will be considered an exempt record under state open records laws, which means that it's in the city's discretion as to whether or not to release that record. There's other state laws that apply to different forms of addresses that can make them confidential, such as law enforcement addresses or addresses of judges, prosecutors, things of that nature. The new law also offers several optional requirements that governing bodies can adapt that limits public comment, including time limits, topic limits, relevancy requirements, such as requiring the public comment to be pertinent to the public entity or on one agenda or to be on the current agenda or the agenda immediately preceding the one there. There's civility requirements that can be imposed, and there's also confidentiality, confidentiality requirements that can be imposed as well. So what we have proposed before you here today is a public policy resolution, and the North Dakota League of Cities provided a model public comment policy for cities to use to kind of craft its own policy that incorporates the limits that are allowed within the state law. So we've worked with interim mayor Janzer to draft this resolution, but it's amended to accommodate the personal appearances place that's present in the order of business. So in one discussion topic for the council here today is whether to shift personal appearances to an earlier time slot in the council agenda. That will require an ordinance amendment because our current Code of Ordinances sets the order for the current agenda, and presently, personal appearances are towards the end of the current agenda. So if the council wants to shift that to an earlier place, we'd have to draft an ordinance allowing that. The current draft does not have that contemplated. It keeps it in its, its current place towards the end of the regular agendas. Other changes that we've, we've made in this resolution includes a time limit. So in the League of Cities draft that they proposed, they have a three-minute time limit. We kept it at five because that's the speaker time allotted under our ordinances as well. Other than that, I have a draft of the public policy resolution up. I can plug into DIA seven, so the council can take a look at that and make any proposed recommendations to that that it sees fit. And I can stand for any questions on this item as well.
And that proposed, uh, resolution is actually also attached to the packet, so you've had time to take a look at it. Thank you for the explanation, city attorney. City council, what are your wishes?
I move that we approve the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Blessam. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Alderman Blessam.
Just, just a couple of general comments first, and then there's maybe a couple of things I wanna look at inside it. I think the wonderful thing about this entire process is that we've had it right. We've done it the right way for a long time, and I, I've, I've said that multiple times. I appreciate that so much. You know, one of the things I think we wanna, we wanna hold on to all that we've had there. And, you know, I, I think even things along, you know, during the legislative session, the, the, the back and forth on this bill was very interesting because you had a lot of public entities wanting to, in their words, sort of protect themselves from the public. Where I just look at it so opposite, you know, I, I don't, I don't think we need protecting. I think we need more, more face-to-face interaction. And so, um, you know, some of the, some of the possibilities out there about whether, you know, I don't mind the idea of moving it earlier, although I don't mind where it is either. I think on important topics, we have the ability to open it up to public comment if we wanna do that anyway. One of the ones I really don't like is I, I don't like limiting it to whether it's this agenda or the previous agenda. You know, we've had items in the last couple of months where if we hadn't had the completely open process, we wouldn't have heard about it at all under that kind of policy because it was, it was completely off topic. Does it mean there are times when things will, will go off on tangents? Yeah. But that's why we have other rules like time limits and things like that. So in general terms, I think we've got it right. I think we're headed in the right direction. The one thing I did wanna just mention, in point four, um, the agenda item will be limited to a total of thirty minutes. I, I think that's hard. I think, you know, as long as we have the same idea that we could extend that through a motion, maybe we're okay then. Because I, it just depends on how many are here. You know, if we, if people are here and they really wanna bring their voice, I don't think we wanna turn that down very often. So as long as that were still a possibility, I could support it with the thirty minute in there. Again, I, you know, I think if we were all facing four or five hour meetings simply because of personal appearances, we'd have to talk about it. But we haven't seen that. You know, I think it's, it's been more active lately, but I guess that's where I'm at. That, that was the one thing that I did just kinda see in there, but I don't, I don't know if there's anybody else that, um, that wants to mention, that wants to talk about those.
Thank you, Alderman Blessam. Uh, Alderman Fuller.
I just had one real quick question, Steph. So it looks like we're gonna make them fill out a, a card beforehand. What about people that come to the meeting and decide they wanna get up and speak at that point then? How do we handle those? Because I, you know, that does happen.
And thank you for the question, Alderman Fuller. So the way that I'm contemplating that this could work is that we could also have speaker cards available at the meeting as well. It does have this thirty minute cap here, and that was proposed in the draft copy that was presented by the North Dakota League of Cities. So point four to Alderman Blessam's point, it does allow the thirty minute time limit for personal appearances to be extended by a majority vote of the council. And so when it comes to thinking about how this would work in practice is if that thirty minutes should fill up, say you have a controversial item and everybody, you, you can email the city clerk under this policy and ask for your time slot. But once that, those five minutes are taken up for the full thirty minutes, either the city council could move to extend that time limit, or those speakers that still wanna speak could also appear at the next agenda, which would fall into the, the concept where you can speak on the agenda topics that are at hand or the agenda immediately preceding that. Also to that end, if somebody does wanna talk about something that's not on the current agenda, they could always contact the mayor. They could contact the city clerk, the city manager, or two council members and ask to be placed on a future agenda as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessam.
Um, I apologize. I, I'm typically thorough on this stuff. I was not as thorough on this item as I thought I was. I'm, I'm gonna bring a couple amendments, so I can do them as one. Number one, I, I don't think that we should have submissions beforehand. If you want to, I don't have any issue with that. It's a way to get your information on a card. I think the big thing is so that we end up with the information, so it's documented. I think that's really what we're looking for. You know, the legislature takes tons and tons of testimony simply signing your name standing at the podium, and I think we can do that exact same thing here. So that's the first part of our motion, is that they would not be required prior to the meeting. Number two, um, I don't think we even need to ask for an agenda item. Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we could do these separately, or if you'd like them in one motion, I'm fine.
Maybe, yeah, so that we don't have too many things balled up and then have to decide which one we're.
And splitting and all that. So, so let's do the first one.
I'll second the speaker card.
Yep, so the speaker card does not have to be submitted prior to the meeting. It could be done at the podium.
Okay. Is there a second to that? Second by Alderman Pittner. Discussion. Alderman Samuelson.
I thank you for that, Mike. That was my one thing on this that, that I didn't agree with. Because I know this few times when, when I was in the audience and I wanted to get up and talk, I didn't plan on talking until some discussion came up. So I just don't, I don't think that that, that needs to be. Every place else I've been, you sign a sheet and you talking.
Further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, the amendment is to, uh, you wanna restate the motion?
It would be amend to remove the requirement of the speaker card being submitted prior to the meeting.
Okay, but it does not remove the requirement that they sign in?
Yep, that's fine.
And.
All, city attorney?
So plugged into DIA seven here, if you look at the screen in front of you, I have some proposed red lines to that information. And just contemplating how this would work, so if someone comes into the meeting, they grab a public comment card. They fill out their name, their address, what they wanna talk about. And then who is the council contemplating that be submitted to? Would you submit it to the chair who's currently chairing the meeting? Would you submit it to city clerk? Would you want them to put it in a box? Would you want them to put it on the podium? We would collect the information through some means. I just wanna make sure that we're all on the same page as to how that would work.
So if I could, Mr. Mayor, my, my perspective on it would be just like they would handle it at the legislature. It's a, it's a sign and sheet on a clipboard. They write their name and whatever relevant information we want, and it's all done there. And if Michaela wants it for minutes afterwards, it's available. They, I think we should follow the same thing we've done, which is please state your name and that you live in the city, because it's nice to be able to get their name on the screen if we can.
Perfect.
So that would be my intent with the motion.
City manager.
Excuse me, just a point order on that. So item number two discusses that any missing information from the speaker card disqualifies the individual from speaking at the meeting. So if they're signing up on a board that we can't see, we don't know if that information is complete or not, so that would make that one obsolete.
Is there, okay.
So, city manager, are you suggesting also striking paragraph two? Or are you suggesting some other means by which to monitor who is writing information on the clipboard?
I guess the question would be is how, how hard the council wants to be on making sure that all information is provided. I guess the question would be is how, how hard the council wants to be on making sure that all information is provided. So one of the challenges would be is I think by state law, they're required to put their address. We can keep it exempt, but if they get up and just put their name and don't put their address, technically speaking, they're not following state law.
Alderman Blessam.
I guess my thought on this entire thing, as I said at the beginning, is we had it right. So please, let's not take a step worse. Let's, let's make sure that we're providing to the public the means to come and talk. And so my thought would be, I mean, the way I've always looked at it is if you can stand up there and say, look, I, I'm Mike Blessam. I live, you know, in southwest Minot. I've met the requirement that I pay taxes in the city or I live in the city, and I've got the right to speak to my council that I elected. So that's the way that I look at it. I don't want this to be a hindrance to that. So I don't want us, okay, well, somebody's got to stand there and verify what they wrote. To me, that's not the intent here, right? The intent is to make sure we've got the documentation that we want and to meet the law, right? Because that, the law, does the law have this piece in it?
It does, and to one comment, one comment on what you had stated is there isn't a residency requirement. So somebody can come from out of town and speak about a topic and not necessarily be a resident of the city as well. It would just help the council kind of take that into consideration when weighing the comments that are delivered if it's somebody who's a resident of the city or if it's someone who's a guest.
Alderman Pittner.
In my misremembering, didn't, didn't we used to ask people to state their names and their addresses? Can you please state your name and your address?
I think a lot of people still do even when they come.
And we did used to have a clipboard. I recall at the old city hall, there was a clipboard that would sit up at the dais as well, and people would step up and write their name. And I don't know that it was necessarily policed to make sure that it was all accurate or everything was written down, but that, that practice was there.
But to the point, you know, I guess in its public record, but these meetings are recorded. I mean, is that not documentation? If, if state law requires that, and I get it, we want to protect individuals and stuff like that, but it's that balance, I guess.
It could be sufficient. I mean, it's, it's also, we have to take minutes of the meeting too. So when you go back to like a recording, you have to take, invest the time to go back and find the names, the addresses. I know Michaela takes a lot of those down here during the meeting, but.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, Alderman Pittner, are you talking about having the citizen state verbally what their address is?
That's what we used to do.
I think, I think so, and the reason of the intent, and someone can correct me if I'm wrong, for the legislative intent to allow that to be exempted out is not everyone wants their address known publicly. And so by writing it down, council has the ability to keep that exempt. By making them come and state it publicly, everybody knows it now, so.
I agree completely. I'm just trying to adapt to the new law, so.
Alderman Olson.
I'm going to throw one more monkey wrench into this. I still like the card, and I would like to see that card available because there will be people who know I'm coming to speak, and they'll have it filled out. There will be some that just on the spur of the moment, get up and speak. And if there's a few cards up there, they could fill it out. But I just think for efficiency, if they come prepared with a card, it saves 30 seconds, 60 seconds, whatever it takes.
And, and I would surmise that, I mean, all they'd have to do is leave it on the podium. City attorney.
I think the League of Cities contemplated, like in, in the doing it in advance, it would then create a queue. Like first come to fill out the card, we'd be the first one to speak, and those cards would then go up to the, the chair, mayor, whoever it is that's chairing the meeting, and they would have the stack of cards in front of them, and they would call the names as, so then it would create the line for them.
As a matter of fact, I remember it, it said that the speakers would, you know, be called forward in order that the cards were received, and it was what, the way they had it.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, if I could add something on that, I think, again, like I said before, we have to, we have to remember that the League of Cities was contemplating a whole bunch of cities and other public entities that weren't having this at all. And so they were trying to find a middle ground that helped those that were really scared of this wade into these waters, where I think we're coming at it from the other side. And so I would love for us to walk out so that this isn't worse than we had it. I think, I think, I don't think we've had any disservice done to the city by listening to everybody that's been up here since I've sat up here. So I, I think, I, I don't mind the idea of having them though, because I think they could get it done. I think that's helpful. Like when, if people walked in and by where we have our agendas or even on the table up front, they could do it then. I think that's helpful. I don't see any issue there at all.
Alderman Pittner.
So does the wording maybe change, individuals may submit speaker, must submit speaker card information to the city clerk prior to speaking? Before we allow them to speak, before they, before they're allowed, they submit, they will just submit the card to Michaela? Michaela then has the information, can verify that it was filled out correctly, and we proceed?
Prior to speaking makes more sense certainly than prior to the meeting. Okay, so Mr. Mayor, if we could, can I, can I just withdraw the motion? And we'll, we'll start clean because we're, we've gotten off on a whole bunch of different tangents.
You can.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so we're now seeing in real time the correction that the city attorney is making to the document.
Okay.
So if you can kind of work with that, and if that is accurately reflecting our discussion.
Yes, so I'll move that change, yes.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Olson, any discussion? Alderman Pittner.
Again, real time, individuals may submit speaker card information to city clerk prior to speaking. Should it be must?
Yeah, it's in paragraph one, it says must in paragraph. Yeah, we should make that, yeah, must, okay.
Here we go.
Okay, so it's must in bold now.
So I'm good with that change.
Everybody good?
Yes.
City manager.
Not trying to muddy the water here, but we have stricken in advance of the meeting. I understand that you don't want to require that, but it may be helpful that the public knows that they can sign up to speak before the meeting if they want to by contacting the city clerk in advance. So I, I agree with the terminology of removing it as a requirement, but you may still want it there as just public information that they don't have to wait and come to the meeting to sign up to speak. They could sign up days in advance if they would like to by contacting the, the city.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, on that point, that becomes very important if we leave a 30-minute limit. Then, then we've got to really address that. But as far as I'm concerned, whether you do before or during, you're going to get your, your spot.
Yeah, and again, with the 30-minute limit not being hard and fast, we can open it up for more time. Yep.
Okay, so, so wait, there's an adjustment here though now. Okay, I'm fine with that adjustment.
Yes.
Okay, so we, we still have a motion. Let's, let's vote on this one and then we'll, then we'll go to the next stuff.
The motion to amend passed unanimously.
Okay, are there, are there any further amendments that the council wishes to offer?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Blessam.
I would prefer that we remove the agenda item from the speaker card. I'll move that.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we remove the, who is the second? Alderman Pittner, okay. Any discussion of the amendment? City manager.
There's a point of consideration there, and I guess I'm fine. I guess the question would be is whether or not you want to leave that as an optional? Because if you have several people that sign up to one, on one topic, I guess it depends on whether you're taking them in order as received or whether you want to have the, the mayor have the ability to have them consolidate a topic. So you're not bouncing between two or three different topics at the same time. And so if they optionally say, I want to talk on this item, you have the ability potentially to consolidate them, taking that comment before you move on to the next topic. But we're also talking about a 30-minute time, time span, so maybe that doesn't matter as much if it bounces back and forth between topics.
Maybe, maybe instead of agenda item, it could, it could say this topic or something.
Yeah, I think, I don't have any issue with the same topic.
Because, to your point, in some cases, it's not an agenda item. It's something that we have said in the past that in terms of being open to citizens wanting to come and talk to us about something that maybe we don't really know about, it's certainly not on the agenda. But we have, we have put that invitation out there. And I think, I think having that kind of openness makes sense. It is consistent with, with what we've had in the past.
Mr. Mayor, I'll amend my motion to change the word agenda item to topic rather than striking it.
Okay.
Second agrees.
Just topic, right, not agenda topic?
Correct.
Do you want me to strike the rest of the sentence as well?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then that turns into topic. Okay, seeing those, seeing those changes, let's vote on that.
Motion to amend passed unanimously.
Any other amendments to be offered to the?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to see a strike the entirety of point four, which is a 30-minute rule. And I think it's, it's a good discussion. I don't mind if, if others disagree and want to keep it. I just think this is a signal to the public that, no, come and talk. We, we are here to listen.
Second.
Moved and seconded to strike item number four. Discussion. Seeing none, I guess let's vote on the amendment.
Motion to amend passed unanimously. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go back to number two and strike number two. I'll make that as a motion.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded to strike number two, which states that missing information from the speaker card disqualifies the individual from speaking at the meeting. And the motion is to strike that. Any discussion?
So the.
City attorney.
Excuse me, I believe the address and the name are required under the new state law. Pull that up too.
Motion maker, do you have a alternative?
Just look this up here. So it's a requirement on the individual under state law? Says that they shall provide the governing body in writing their name and address.
So in understanding that, then I will remove my motion.
Okay, anything further? All right, seeing none. We have a amended document before us. Is there a motion to approve the document as amended?
We have the original motion, I believe Alderman Olson.
Yeah, we're working on that motion.
Okay, we have that, okay.
I have a minor amendment, amendment to propose. So under what's now five A, it addresses the agenda items. If there's no objection, I'll also change that to topic to be consistent with the motion that was initiated by Alderman Blessam.
Is that agreeable to everyone? Consistency.
And then one other question that I have is in relation to the paragraph in front of it, paragraph four, individuals will be called on to present public comments in the order speaker cards were submitted. I'd offer up if we want to group individuals speaking by topic, that may not necessarily align with how the speaker cards are submitted. And so that's something to just kind of offer up to the council is, do you want to call them up in the order they're submitted? Or do you want to give the chair discretion? If you want to give the chair discretion, I'd recommend striking paragraph four as well.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I'll make the motion to strike four.
Second.
I think to that point, I, I think if, if the chair of the meeting wants to say, is there anybody else who would like to talk on this topic? Now would be the time to present your cards. Probably expedites the flow of the meeting.
Sure. So we're getting rid of that, correct?
That's the proposal, yep. Strike para, what is paragraph four, the language, individuals will be called upon to present public comments in the order that the speaker cards were submitted. That'll place that, that issue in the discretion of the chair of the meeting.
Okay. Alderman Olson.
I have a question on what will now be five B, be pertinent to the city of Minot. I think that that could be kind of up for a question too. I would almost prefer that it would be under the authority of the city of Minot or under the authority of the, the city council because pertinent might be interesting, but we may not be able to take action on anything. And I would use as an example, people who choose to campaign during their five minutes. That's pertinent to the city of Minot, but it's not under our authority.
Okay.
Like if I'm understanding it correctly, I would, I would reword that similar to the guidelines that you've been sharing in past meetings.
Are you, city attorney, it looks like you're showing us the state, is that the state statute that you're showing to the right there?
Yes, so we took this right from here, which, and I, the League of Cities adopted that same language. So they used the term pertinent, which is why we drew that into the, the ordinance. But I, and I definitely see Alderman Olson's point, it's something that's, it's a very broad term.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, and the, the important thing though, Steph, as you mentioned before, this is in a may clause. So, so this, this is up to us. We, we write this policy as we please. And, and actually, I, I agree with you on that one, and I actually, even the one before it, what is now five A. While, yeah, we're asking for a topic, you know, we, we know our speakers and they'll, they may meander a little bit, and that's okay. You know, if they want to say taxation is too high and tell us 15 different ways that it is, I think that's perfectly fine. And if they meander off, I think that's perfectly fine. I think, I think we've had it right. I don't think there's been, it's been often, other than time, where the mayor's had to step in. So I would be, I would be all for shrinking as much of this as we can. Okay, so if there's a motion there, is there?
We're still on amendment?
Can I just intervene here?
Yeah.
Okay, what's the motion that's on the floor?
Right now, and I, I believe you can correct me wrong, if I'm wrong, it's amend to strike number five, which is what it was when the agenda was published, where individuals will be called on to present public comments in the order in which they were submitted. And I believe Alderman Blessam seconded that one.
Yes, okay, so before we go further into the weeds, as it were, let's vote on that motion, please.
Alderman Samuelson, did you get a vote? It's not showing up for me. The motion passed unanimously.
Okay, now, was there something further? Alderman Olson.
Certainly, so can we add to five B, add in a statement such as, so be pertinent to the city of Minot and fall under the authority of the city council?
City attorney, are you good with that?
I guess my question would be the expectation then if it doesn't fall under the authority of the city council. So if somebody wants to address whether Australia should still be a country. I don't, like if they just, that's what they want to talk about to the city council for five minutes. Would you contemplate calling that person to order and inviting them to leave the podium? Or would you contemplate something else?
The contemplation, yeah, probably.
Like something just bizarre, would the expect, the expectation that would be to call the person to order and then invite them to either select a different. Would the expect, the expectation that would be to call the person to order and then invite them to either select a different topic that is under the authority of the city council or invite them to leave the podium? I mean, it's just to talk through kind of like, that's what the expectation would be if that's what the language would be, would, were to pass.
Yes, and in response to the city attorney, it could be something where someone had a concern about something at the public school. It's pertinent in the city of Minot, but it's not under our authority. So again, I think at that point, then the chair would say, you know, you need to address this to the, the board that has the authority over that issue.
Yes, or tie it into if it relates to public safety or something that is within the scope of the city's authority. I think that would, I think it would be well within the chair and the council's discretion to add that language.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
Did we have a second on that?
Not yet.
Seconded by Alderman Samuelson. Okay, any discussion of the motion?
Real fast, I'm just, I'm going to vote no. It's not that I disagree that we want people to be under the, what we're looking at. It's just I, I think this starts to shrink what we're saying is available and puts a lot on the mayor to figure it out each time and all that. So I, I would actually be more inclined to just remove B. But that's, that's just a different way of looking at it.
Any further discussion? If not, let's vote.
Motion to amend passed four to two with dissent from Blessom and Pittner.
Okay. Anything else to be adjusted?
And so interim mayor, members of the council, paragraph nine also relates to submitting comments to the city council prior to the meeting.
Well, I guess if we took it out in one place, it should get taken out in the other place, so.
It, it prescribes time limits for when written comments will be distributed to the city council.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would just move to remove item nine. I, I think we, we get plenty of emails that are distributed to all of us that you can submit online. If you want to be heard, you need to come. That, that's my take, so I would move that we remove nine.
Second.
Moving seconded to remove paragraph nine, it just turned red. Any further discussion? Seeing none.
Double check, would that been, would have been 11 on the original agenda?
I have it as 10 on the original.
I think we strike two, so we strike four and five, so.
I don't think we s... Paragraph two was withdrawn. That motion was withdrawn.
No, but I think we strike four and then five, where the individuals would be called to present. I think it's, I can change it.
It's that long paragraph at the end there that we're talking about, which is currently labeled nine on the screen.
10 on the attachment.
You okay with that, city clerk? Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none. Let's vote.
The motion to amend passed unanimously.
Okay, we're, we're at the end of the document, and I, I would guess we have set a council record for wordsmithing in public. If, if anybody would like to change anything else, now is the time.
And I'm, if, at the pleasure of the council, I'm just going to leave these, this highlighted language in place. So the policy will remain in effect until repealed or otherwise modified by the city council. It'll go into effect after this meeting, so there's not two meetings required to read it like you would in ordinance. A resolution is just effective upon passage.
Thank you for pointing that out, city attorney. Okay, we have a motion and a second, I believe, correct? To pass the res, the resolution as am, now as amended? Is that agreeable to the motion maker and the second? All right, let's vote.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, we've been at this for going on three hours. And we have a number of agenda items left. I think in order to accommodate the rest of the meeting, I will take a 10-minute recess, and we will resume at 8:30.
All right, we are back in order, and we are on item 7.5, which is the facade improvement program case number F I dash 15. A request by Askel Group LLC for improvements to be made at 110 East Central Avenue. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Move for approval by Alderman Pittner?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Olson. Discussion.
Alderman Blessom.
And Brian, if, if you don't mind. My one quick question on this one, Brian, is just, it, just the, the orientation of the building. It's a little unique in this case. You know, you would normally think about a corner being a corner of two streets, two named streets, I would think. Has this, has it come up before? Was it contemplated in policy? How, how did it, how did you come to the determination?
Mayor Janzer, Alderman Blessom, the, the, the guidelines for the program pretty much call out that if any part of a building faces a public street, that, that, that facade is eligible. In this situation, the building is like in a 45-degree angle. It's parallel with the railroad, not with the street. And there are two facades that are clearly visible from Central Avenue. So therefore, we, we actually have done this a couple of other times. The, I know the Osslander Building next to, I can't, can't remember the name of the business next to it, but the Osslander Building just on the street from this had both sides renovated, even though only one faced technically the street. And then there was a, I believe, another project, too, on Central Avenue as well that had received benefits because it also had two sides that faced a street as well. So it's, it's, it, it's something that I don't think we comp, kind of contemplated when it came up, when we put together the program guidelines. But in, in my opinion, it meets the requirements that's stated in the, in the guidelines. Therefore, it should receive the benefit. And another thing, the applicant is going to be fixing up all four sides of the building. The other two sides are on their own dime as well. So they're, they're going to complete the whole project, not just the two sides that face the street.
Thanks, Brian. If I can continue, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Alderman Blessom.
So, you know, kind of the same comments from the, from the Renaissance Zone discussion from before. I think as far as I can tell, everything meets the requirements. So I'll, I'll vote yes. But I think this is another, another spot where we've really got to take a look at this program. We've got the richest program by far in the state. I mean, I think six times what, what Mandan has available for their program. And so it's my hope coming out of our economic development discussions that we'll start to take a look at this and, and realign it a little bit to make sure that it's meeting the needs.
Any other questions for city development director? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Any further discussion by the council? Alderman Samuelson.
So I, I would just like to make a comment. The facade program I do not agree with. It's, it's not the projects, it's not who it benefits. I just, I don't agree with taking taxpayer dollars and doing this. And when I look at this one in particular, this is, this is almost paying for two firefighters in a year. What we're doing with this. I just, I, I, we're, we're picking some that we do it for, and it's only for downtown. I just don't think it's a good use of taxpayer money.
Further discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, we have motion and a second. Lee Castor votes.
The motion passed five to one, dissent, Alderman Samuelson.
That takes us to item number 7.6. Sixth Street Southwest, south of 11th Avenue Southwest, parking revision.
Southwest, parking revision. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, let's have the vote.
The motion passed unanimously.
Next is item 7.7. This is a approval of a job description and pay grade for the position of deputy police chief. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Move by Alderman Pittner?
Second.
Second by Alderman Samuelson. Discussion. Seeing none, I presume we're ready to vote. Please mark your ballots.
The motion passed unanimously.
That takes us to number eight, which is personal appearances. We have had considerable discussion of this section this evening already. But anyone who wishes to address the council, please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Edana Kitzman. I'm from Minot. And I think we're still in America, so it should be okay if I say something about the Fourth of July in Bismarck at the Capitol on July 1st. They put 30 people, the U.S. nationalization ceremony, they came from other countries, and that was all over the United States. Every state did that. Washington D.C. had 100 different countries. And I thought, well, if the alphabet is right, they'll end with a country that ends with C, and they sure did. I think it was Zimbabwe. And they got to the part of recite after me or whatever. Well, it wasn't me, but they did recite. They articulated so beautifully, you understood every single word. And there were at least 100 people saying those words. And they learned the English language either before they got here or after they got here. And I thought, with that effort, it's worth commenting now. That it's worth it to let people come here with the education they have and want to have and keep promoting that that's who we will let here. I still believe in the screening, though, very strongly at the borders, that there should be a screening for what they need to do and look for. But that's a lot of people in one day that came over and said that. And they got more than a little flag. They got something, I think, more than a coin to stick in a box and in a corner, too. I think it's a lapel pin or something. Happy Fourth of July.
Anyone else care to wish, or care to, wish to address the council tonight? Public appearances. Seeing no one, I will move on. We are at item number nine, which is miscellaneous and discussion items. 9.1 is the Airport Terminal Roadway Planning Study. And our airport director is going to...
I'm not going to present, but I do have Chris Brett, who's been patiently waiting on our line here. He is an aviation planner for Short Elliott and Hendrickson, and he will be presenting the Terminal Roadway Planning Study, which was conducted over the past year, year and a half or so.
Okay. Thank you, Director.
Thanks, Jennifer. Thanks, everyone, for having me. Going to present just kind of an overview of our Terminal Roadway Planning Study that we completed, as Jennifer said, over the past year at the airport. The quick background, just being that the airport wanted to address issues with kind of the roadway configuration of the airport as it exists today. I know there's a lot of concerns about the design not being intuitive, causing a lot of efficiency and safety concerns for both the users of the airport and airport staff. So I think the full study is in the packet for this meeting. The FAA funded this study to kind of find some potential solutions and a path forward on correcting these problems. So the presentation here today, I'll just give an overview of what's in that final study. The agenda kind of follows exactly how the report is set up. So an overview, looking at what exists at the airport today, identifying those issues and needs, the alternatives analysis that we produced, and then finally kind of a plan to move forward and implement those changes. The overview of the project, the objective is essentially informed decision-making. So we wanted to bring several people in to kind of say, okay, we know there's an issue here. How do we, how do we address it? Bring in everyone's expertise to kind of come up with recommendations to help guide that future infrastructure geometric improvements at the airport. Our project team included the Minot Airport Group, obviously. We had the city traffic engineer, Stefan, his last name is escaping me. Some of the airport stakeholders, so the rental car agencies, the parking, the company that runs the parking at the airport, contacted some of the airlines, other users of the airport, just to have their feedback and kind of their ideas of what to see. And then obviously, the FAA and the North Dakota Aeronautics Commission were also part of the team. Starting with the existing site conditions, I'm sure many are aware of kind of what exists at the airport, but just a real quick summary. The terminal building is up in the kind of northeast corner of that figure that's on the screen. There's North Broadway, runs along the west side, running north to south. Airport Road provides the main access to the airport environment. Third Street Northeast on the southeast side there. What we have labeled as slip lane road, I don't know if that's the formal name for it, but it is kind of what we've been calling it. That provides access to some of the parking lots and then the terminal curb front. Just to the southeast of that is kind of what we're calling the S curve. That also provides access from the south half of the environment up to the terminal and out through that terminal road. That all is a one-way flowing counterclockwise. And then there's, again, the short-term parking right by the terminal, rental car parking just to the west of that, and then the long-term parking lot in the southeast corner. Some of the issues that we noted throughout the process, the first one being the access points, and I might also call these decision points, too. So there's two different, the slip lane road, that S curve that we saw on the last slide. Those are both entrances that provide access to kind of a combination of different destinations. Some are the same between both entrances, some are different between both, can be confusing for someone trying to navigate the airport for the first time, or someone who's not comfortable with kind of the added stress on top of the travel day. So you can see that picture on the left is one of the signs at the access point. There's a lot of different destinations, a lot of different directions, a lot to digest as you're going through. One note that the airport, I think, was pretty adamant about is the wrong-way traffic on Terminal Road. Like we discussed, Terminal Road is all one-way. There are signs prohibiting turns onto that terminal roadway. However, I think Jennifer noted, there's at least probably once a day, several a day, that turn down that terminal road going the wrong direction. Obviously, that becomes a pretty big safety issue for everyone involved. The slip lane road, there is currently not, access is not allowed for cars that are traveling westbound on Airport Road. So anyone arriving from the south or the east cannot make a right turn on that slip lane road. It's currently prohibited. So if anyone were to miss that entrance by the long-term parking, they would have to, they would approach that slip lane road, not be able to turn, and that could add to some confusion as well there, potentially adding to people turning down Terminal Road, thinking that's their only way into the airport. The airport also noted that that slip lane road is difficult for snow removal operations as well. The S curve entrance, one of their biggest problems there is tend to see large backups during the busiest hours of the airport. So when these large aircraft are coming in with lots of passengers, arriving passengers, the cars that are coming in to pick them up from the curb front will back up along Terminal Road, back all the way onto that S curve, and then even potentially out to that Third Street entrance, becoming kind of a bigger problem for the city as a whole. So looking at ways to kind of mitigate that process as best we can. I know one of the issues is that we get cars that will pull up to that first door at the terminal park and then think that's the best spot to pick somebody up. And obviously, that creates kind of a backup immediately. So finding a way to get cars to move down to the farther doors of the terminal. There's also the difficult geometry of that S curve. When larger trucks come through there, it sounds like they hit that curb often, damaging the pavement. And then it falls on the airport staff to have to fix the pavement there, the curb there, kind of constantly, frequently. And then again, large amount of information, quick succession, that sign we saw on the last slide with all that information, that is right at just west of that long-term parking label. We get cars that pull in immediately are confronted with that sign. That's a pretty small piece of pavement for them to have to see that sign, make a decision on which direction they need to go. That can cause backups, it can cause people to get confused, make wrong turns, just generally not know the best way to get to where they're going. And then lastly, the parking lots, one of the big things is naming confusion. We have it, the airport's currently labeled a short-term and long-term parking. That's not technically accurate, as someone could park in the short-term parking lot for a long duration of time. It's just kind of a note on the rates of parking. There are users who would park, who would want to pay that premium to park in the short-term lot, to park closer to the doors of the terminal. So letting them know that this exists could be added revenue for the airport. The rental car lot, that farthest west parking lot is combined with the short-term lot, adds to some confusion when people are looking for parking, and additionally, when they're looking for their rental car return. Having it all in the same spot can be a source of confusion. One other note that I know the airport mentioned is the rental car entrance, the entrance to the rental car parking lot being beyond the terminal curb front area, we get rental car employees who, after taking the cars off-site to refill with gas, clean the cars, things of that nature, they will often come back and speed through the terminal curb front area. Obviously, that would be, it's a pretty big safety concern with passengers in that area, stopped cars. Obviously, that's a spot with some slow-moving traffic. So keeping them out of that area would be best. And finally, a cellphone lot. A lot of times we see airports around the size of Minot start to implement that cellphone lot. So a place where passengers or people coming to pick up the passengers can wait in a kind of a designated area for their party to be ready to be picked up. Without that cellphone lot, you get a lot of circling traffic, so people just traversing through those roadways, and then potentially parking in non-designated areas. So like we mentioned before, parking kind of where they're not supposed to, creating backups. It can also be a safety concern. TSA is not a fan of cars being parked right at airport access points and not knowing kind of what they're doing. So a lot of times it falls to other staff at the airport who should, I think, be doing other duties at the airport to have to come out and direct traffic, obviously, taking a resource out of the airport who could be better utilized elsewhere. So. The alternatives analysis, then, so how we plan to address all these issues, we split it into a short-term, medium-term, and long-term concept. The, I guess, idea behind that is that short-term concept would be the kind of smaller, cost-effective measures. These would be the ones that are easier to implement, things like signage, marking, those kinds of changes. We can hopefully, you know, quickly address any safety issues with these. And then I think one of the benefits of doing it this way also is these short-term concepts, you can put them in place and then kind of measure to see how well they address the issues before having to turn or having to start thinking about turning to bigger, maybe costlier options. So those medium-term concepts, those are going to be the bigger projects. You'll see some more geometrical changes, pavement changes. Those might require additional planning and investment down the road. And then the long-term concepts kind of build on those medium-term concepts, kind of the same methodology, though, is the medium-term, where there's the kind of bigger pavement-type changes. The first one, I know this is going to be very difficult to read, but the short-term concept, it's just a lot of signage changes. All this text that you can see on there, it's all signs, the blue being new or updated signs versus what's there today. I will point out some of the bigger things, one being the renaming of the parking lots. So instead of long-term, short-term, we have economy and premium to hopefully better portray what is actually in those parking lots and who could use those parking lots. Some of the other big ones, we have this, what is today called, I think, the RV lot is how we've been referring to it. It's a parking lot that's left over from the old terminal. I know it's not in very good shape, but in our short-term concept, we've just kind of notified that it could be, the space could be saved for a potential cellphone waiting lot. That may be a bit of a bigger investment than the short-term concept, kind of the point of that. But I think the desire here is more to reserve that space for a potential cell lot. So then we know any wayfinding signs that are added to the airport, there's some space saved in case we need to, we'd like to implement that in the future, things of that nature. I do have two kind of zoom-ups on the next slide here for kind of some detailed view. The first one being the actual terminal building itself, establishing an arrival and a departure zone, having those marked on the signs. That is to kind of promote these users who are coming in and parking right at that first door to pick up arriving passengers, to keep them moving, to motivate them to move down farther, noting that those arrival doors are the farther set of doors. So to just keep that traffic moving along that, this terminal roadway route, so as not to back up easier into that S curve. And we also have just a little bit of pavement added onto that S curve, make it easier for any of those larger vehicles to traverse this area, which also allows for this to be established into a two-lane entrance, so it's not a merge point anymore. Hopefully, that also can keep the traffic flowing, avoid those backups, and people can understand where they need to go a little easier. And then on the right side, that slip lane road entrance off of Airport Road, one of the things our traffic engineers did was model that movement. We did find that it is a movement that cars are able to make that right turn from Airport Road onto the slip lane road. The larger trucks won't be able to make it. So proposing just changing that signage to instead prohibit trucks from making So proposing just changing that signage to instead prohibit trucks from making that right turn, but allowing the cars to make their right turn. Hopefully to get anyone who missed the entrance back kind of by the economy parking lot to be able to make this turn before they get to Terminal Roadway and potentially panic and turn down the wrong way, down that Terminal Road. The medium-term concept, again, this is kind of a bigger geometric changes. If we still have issues down the road beyond that short-term fixes. I think the biggest, well, the first one I would point out is splitting that premium parking lot and the rental car parking lot. This, we would keep that middle kind of piece between the two just for, I believe the airport requested it for snow removal activities, but it would be essentially closed pavement to the public. And with those being separated, adding an entrance point to the rental car parking lot. You can kind of see it on Airport Road, kind of in the southwest corner there. So that would keep that entrance point out of Terminal Roadway to keep those rental cars from flying through that terminal curb front area. And then that, what is remaining of the slip lane road then would just be an entrance to the premium parking lot with an additional entrance, or excuse me, additional exit just beyond that terminal curb front area. The other kind of point of this being, we have separate entrances for each destination, I guess. So the rental car parking lot has an entrance, then you go a couple hundred feet down. You have the entrance to the premium parking lot, a couple hundred feet down, then you have another entrance. That allows for kind of that advanced signage as well to make sure everyone understands what's coming before they reach that decision point. And then each destination has its own entrance. The interesting part about this one, we do have kind of two alternatives here for the S-curve. The first one being keeping that S-curve kind of in the same spot, running just north-south against that economy parking lot. This would be probably a lower-cost alternative, just because it leaves a lot of, or at least some of that infrastructure there in the same spot, and widens the roadway to two lanes to allow for more traffic to flow through there. The only drawback being you don't get rid of this kind of decision point right at the economy parking lot. So pros and cons to that entrance. This other, I guess, brown-colored line work there is kind of our second option to completely move that S-curve off onto that Airport Road curve. That would then decouple from the economy parking lot entrance, keep us in that, I guess, design of having each entry point being separate, going to separate locations. But again, that will probably require a little bit more of an investment to kind of move that entire roadway over. Again, I want to stress that any of these alternatives, they're just recommendations, suggestions as we actually move to implement these. It's kind of a, I guess I would call it maybe a grab-bag approach of, the airport can take what they like, the city can take what they like, what they don't like. And so anything that's shown, you're certainly not held to, but there's just options. And so we wanted to make sure we left both of these options in there, just from a investment standpoint, from, you know, what's best for the airport at the time they choose to implement these changes. And then the long-term concept, not a huge change on this one, but it would be to completely eliminate that slip lane road, kind of reorient the entrance to this premium parking lot. And then again, adding just more distance between that rental car entrance and the premium parking lot entrance. Again, in this one, you can see again that entrances all have their different entry points, all spaced out, allowing for plenty of signage in between the entrances. So the intent being that everyone's aware of what's coming before they get to that decision point and knows where each entrance leads to. Finally, the implementation plan. The first piece is the cost estimates. We just put some real high planning level estimates towards some of these concepts. They all assume the project will meet federal requirements. So assuming if we were to pursue federal grants for these, we would have to jump through all the hoops to get that federal money. The short-term concept, we have at about $250,000. I know that's somewhat high compared to the other ones. I think it's just because of, one, the sheer number of signs and markings that are in that concept, but also the cellphone lot resurfacing. Again, we know it's in somewhat rough shape, so it would take a little bit of work. But again, I think our intent is more so just to reserve that space and just allow the city and the airport to implement that as needed. So that number does include all of that. And I also noted here that we've discussed with the airport, and I think the airport is going to go ahead with just doing some of these signage changes without the federal funding so that, you know, the airport and the city can make these signs in-house. So I think all of that would lower your cost quite a bit as opposed to having to meet all of the federal guidelines for sourcing and procurement and all of that. Medium-term concept, again, a higher number just because of all the geometric and pavement changes. So at 300,000, and then that long-term concept down to 100,000 just because there's only one of the bigger pieces of pavement changes there. Just a quick overview of the funding sources for this kind of project. There are your federal FAA grants. This is what the airport would typically use for capital infrastructure projects. I think a lot of the kind of bigger projects that happen at the airport are funded with FAA grants. One note is that they would be restricted to non-revenue generating areas. So this money couldn't be used for the parking lots or the rental car, the rental car parking lot, or any of the signs within. And I think the idea being you're generating revenue, so you would be able to pay for that without the federal benefit. Typically, these FAA grants will fund these projects at 90%. The exception being, I think, this year and next year with the passage of the FAA Reauthorization Act, they did bump that to 95% for this year and next year, but typically these are at 90%. State grants, the North Dakota Air and OX Commission typically will fund 50% of airport development projects. There are some times where they will alter that, but I think 50% is your usual number. And then one additional note that they will also cover 50% of that local share of FAA-funded projects. So if the FAA funds 90%, the state would cover five of the remaining 10%. So the city would only be on the hook for the final 5% of that. And then local funds, kind of just the balance remaining after any federal or state grants. One thing I would mention though is there is a, I guess, a pot of money out there. It's the rental car customer facility charges, CFCs. This is a fee that's generally paid by the customers of the rental cars. It's built into the fee structure, goes into the separate pot of money that would help pay for capital costs associated with the rental car improvements, operating expenses. But the restriction being it needs to be used for the benefit of the rental car industry. But just knowing that the federal grants can't pay for any of those non-revenue generating areas, but there is a pot of money that the airport does have for some of this anyway. And then finally, kind of our proposed schedule. Originally, we had imagined that short-term concept would be in 2025, so this year. I think we've discussed with the airport, they're going to move forward with some of just the signage and marking changes first, the kind of low-cost changes that they can, we can do in-house. And I think that works well because of how we structured all this to go for the low-cost ones and then reevaluate after that to see how that changes kind of your passenger, your driver behaviors before going forward with anything larger. We did mark the medium-term concept. It could go forward in 2026. That would be just the earliest possible date. But again, it's probably best to just monitor those behavior changes. Those projects can be pushed later, can break them into smaller phases. There's lots of things that you can kind of work with from these recommendations. And then finally, that long-term concept, we imagine would be somewhere beyond the five-year period. And the airport would just continue to evaluate the need for implementation. And then once we deem it appropriate, there's adequate funding, we can potentially go ahead with those final concepts. And I believe that is all I have.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Are there any questions? By the council? Seeing none, we thank you for the information.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you all.
Okay, we will move on then to item 9.2, which is entitled, "Local Preference For Bidding Construction Projects."
Good evening, members of council. So this is a continuation of a conversation we had back in April. I just have a couple of slides and some things to basically chat with you about and see if there's a direction that council would prefer to go, so. So just a little history. We spent over 23 million in water main replacements since 2012. There's been a non-local contractor that's been the low bidder on the three projects and continuing to award the lowest bidder, saved us over a million dollars on these projects since 12. I guess locally, I can't find any evidence that there are any other communities in the state that use a local preference for construction project bidding. There are some for procurement, like buying goods and things of that nature, but nothing for construction projects. Nationally, there are a lot of communities that roll in a local preference. Basically, what they set up is, as a local business, you have to register as an LBE, a local business entity. And then, you know, so different communities put in, you know, different percentage-based advantages. If you're within 5%, 10%, then, you know, they either award it to the higher bidder if it's within that. Some communities allow the match of the low bid if they're within a percentage. There's some that do benefits that are weighted, depending on different categories of, you know, employees that live in, you know, disadvantaged neighborhoods or, you know, things that, there's a lot of different weighting that can happen in some of these other communities. So one of the first things, and probably the part that I'm having the most difficulty with is establishing what a local business entity means to us. You know, it could be a place of business within a certain distance for at least 12 months. That's a pretty common one that I found online. Licensed to do business in Minot, in good standing, of course. You know, maybe a minimum number of employees that reside in Minot or within a certain distance. And then, of course, not being debarred or suspended or disqualified from bidding. So when you take the six companies that generally are going to submit a bid on a water main replacement project, which I'm mostly responsible for, I took those entities and I just put them on a map to show kind of the distribution. So when we start talking about who's local and who's not, this is, I guess, where I struggle with. All these communities or all these companies, other than probably Wagner and Knife River, Wagner and Knife River have primary headquarters that are outside of Minot, but they both have local offices. So I don't know if that's what the preference would be to to determine, you know, what the local entity is or not, but that would certainly be one of the options. And really, that's about all I have for council. So I just wanted to explain that it can be done. I don't know yet that we've had a problem with our bidding and there's a big out-of-state contractor that's taking all the business. I haven't seen any evidence of that yet, but like council wanted me to look into this. So I'm presenting what I found and seeing if there is a, I guess, determination to go further.
Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Jason, you and I talked earlier today, and I guess one of the questions, like some of the things we spoke about, was what is a local contractor, right? And do you see any issue if we said, hey, a local contractor is registered in the state of North Dakota? That's where their business was registered, not Delaware, not Minnesota, not anyplace else. They're registered here in the state of North Dakota, and they're within a certain circle of the center of Minot, right? 15 miles or something like that. That would include or kick out basically only one or two of them, Wagner and Knife River, which Knife River is MDU and they're located in Bismarck, so I'm sure an argument can be made there. But I mean, to me, that's what a local contractor is or a local business entity is. They are registered in North Dakota and they help our community grow, build, whatever we need to do. The other thing we spoke about, and you were trying, when you were giving your presentation, if we say, hey, a local bidder is this entity, and they were within whatever percent we as a council come up with, or you give us suggestions maybe, and we say it's going to be on any job between 500,000 and 2 million or 3 million, whatever the number is, and if we're there within, say, 7%, the local contractor has the option to match the lowest bid, if that's not another local contractor, and take that work. Do you see anything that would hurt the city of Minot or our bidding in doing it that way?
Mayor Janser, Alderman Fuller, so, you know, the idea of the match, that certainly takes away the thought that we would be paying more to have local work done, you know? So it's still being done at the lowest submitted price. You know, Steph and I, we talked this afternoon about like registration. So Wagner Construction, for instance, they're registered in North Dakota. So I think we'd have to find something different, you know? That, again, like I said, that's where I struggle. Wagner's been here for 13, I think in 2012, I think they first came to Minot, you know? So they've been here, they employ local people, they built a shop in between Minot and Burlington. So that's probably the one where I struggle with, just on how to determine who's local and who's not.
Thank you. So with that then, if we could come up with a way to define that local business entity. And while I understand Knife River is here, they're registered in North Dakota, their business, their company is not registered as a business in the state of North Dakota. They're registered as a business in the state of Minnesota. So while they may have a headquarters here and are able to do business through the state of North Dakota, I mean, they are not a North Dakota company, they are not a Minot company now. I applaud everything that they've done while they've been here, but you said a moment ago, I haven't seen a spot where they've gobbled up all the local work. Didn't they do just that this year? They've gobbled up a lot of the local work in Minot and some of the other smallest towns outside of Minot?
I guess I can't speak to small towns outside of Minot. Yeah, they did get our water main this year, you know? And they saved us, you know, neighborhood of about $220,000, $215,000, you know? So those are things, I guess, that, you know, council has to weigh of, you know, which one is more important, I guess?
Further discussion, questions? Alderman, bless him.
And I don't know if it's questions necessarily, Jason, just a few comments along the way here. I guess I had maybe many of the same thoughts that Rob had. The way that I had it kind of laid out is eligibility to me, and how do you get on the approved list is kind of, to me, one of the big questions. The way that I was thinking of it was North Dakota-based. So again, you got to have your primary business, you know, registration within the state of North Dakota. I mean, to me, that would make sense. Then what I called substantial Minot, or whether you called it Minot, Ward County, twenty-five mile radius, whatever that is, whatever we came to to say substantial operations within that. So if it's a Bismarck-based company registered with the North Dakota Secretary of State in Bismarck with substantial operations in Minot on some, whatever we agree to is the way that that looks, that's the way I think of how you get on the list. And the bigger point, I think, is you need to pre-register so you know you're on the list. That's the key, because then everybody knows the playing field. Everybody knows exactly how it stands going in. And then, once you did that, then I do like the idea, whatever percentage it is, I had it down at five percent saying, look, if you're within five percent of the lowest bid, you have the opportunity to match the lowest bid. And you start at the lowest local bid to get, if there's two of them that are within five percent, the lower of the two gets first shot. If they want it at the bid price, they get it. If not, the second person gets it at the bid price. If both choose to pass, then the bid price wins. So for me, I think, I guess what I'd like to see, and we can see if we head towards a motion here, but I would sort of like to see it on paper so that it's a discussion of actually talking through a policy. And then we can vote yea or nay. And I think that's where the real discussion comes in. I think right now, it's good to know that it's really not going on in the state right now that we can see. There are others outside of the state that are doing it. You know, for me, that's kind of where I'm at. I'd really like to see it. One other thing, maybe I will ask you to comment on, the other note that I had written down was, in your mind, because you're hitting a lot of these, but what projects qualify? Is it everything that requires a bid? Is it, you know, if we do, if we do an H R consulting project to look at it, because that's an actual bid-based process, does it apply there? In your mind, is there anything that's off limits? Like, does it not work in flood? Does it, you know, is there anything that in your mind don't make sense?
Mayor Janser, Alderman Blassem, so I believe anything with federal dollars would not. I think there's a specific statute in federal where you can't use a local preference for federal. So, you know, that includes, you know, probably most of Lance's D O T projects. You know, so I think really it would affect, you know, probably some of Lance's Street Improvement projects, which are done with, you know, the three local paving contractors. And then probably some, but maybe not all of my water main replacements. Some of my water main replacement that I'm seeking S R F funds is backed up with federal dollars. So I'd maybe have to chase that through the system to see if those would apply. So it would mainly be the water main replacement project. I think it would be a pretty small subset of projects that we work on.
If I can continue, Mark?
Go ahead.
And city manager, if you wanted to pop in, because really, I'm thinking of two completely different things. One is where this all came from the first place, which was the Wesley Trucks. And number two was the one tonight for the Colombarium. So we had a series of local companies bidding. And if this had been in place, you know, at least a couple of them would have had the opportunity to match, because they would have been real close to that five percent mark. So Harold, do you have any thoughts? Is there a type of project that, like, if we were really gung-ho and wanted to do this, is there a type of stuff that we should really stay away from? Or is there even a way to write a policy that differentiates that?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blassem. I would say that most of your city spending probably falls within three categories as far as services purchased, I don't even use the word services purchased, outside of operational costs. And that would be services. So for example, you mentioned like H R company, we just heard from Aaron Palmer tonight, right? So that would be one category. We would deem that as a service. I think our current policy doesn't necessarily require that to be bid out, although we do usually try as staff to find alternatives and try to find the most cost-effective option. But by policy, it's not required to be bid out. Then you have what I would call purchasing of goods, whether that's vehicles, paper, you know, those kinds of things, supplies. Local purchasing policy could potentially apply in those areas. And then you have construction projects, like what Mr. Sorenson is talking about. I do agree with the limitation with regards to federal requirements. If there's a dollar of federal in there, you have to meet their procurement policies. And that would put a bit of a snag in there as far as local preference. I would say that our construction projects are pretty limited typically without federal dollars. And there would be some pure procurement of items that would include federal dollars that would apply for as well, such as our transit system, buying a bus, you know, those kinds of things. But I think as long as you put the all, in the policy that if it involves federal funds, a local preference doesn't necessarily apply. But I do think that as far as procurement in some construction projects that don't involve federal dollars, your local preference policy could apply and there could be a conversation about services. And then the question would be, the services gets a little complicated, though, on whether or not your local companies have the same qualifications that an external company would have, right? So.
Mr. Mayor, if I could continue. Yeah, and I think, so is it simple enough to say, Harold, anywhere that current policy would require a bid, it would be appropriate to put a policy on top of that? Outside of the federal, the federal's a different thing.
Yes, it would. But again, just remember that maybe not everything requires bid. So procurement, if it falls within, under certain thresholds, it's not required to be bid.
Right.
Right?
And I think that's okay, at least in my determination. So, Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'll bring a motion to direct staff to prepare a draft policy that we can work from. And again, by no means is this meant to be the final policy. It's meant to provide the framework to get us to a point where we can make a decision. So if I could, I'll lay that out.
Second. Moving seconded, is there any?
Do you want me to, because I'll lay out the parameters that I want in the original one. Is that okay?
Okay.
Are they going to be part of your motion?
Is that part of your motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we have, we're going to have a motion and then we'll get a second for it.
Okay, so my motion is that we have a local preference put in place for North Dakota registered companies that have substantial operations within a twenty-five mile radius of Minot. Hurt Michaela? And that if the local company's bid is within five percent of the winning bid, that they are offered the opportunity to match that bid. And I think implied in there is, you know, we'd go in order if there's multiple locals and stuff like that. We can, but that's the intent. And then just one last piece. Bidders must be pre-registered on the bidding list to be considered local. They must be approved by the city to be on the local bidding list. That's my motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll continue to second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion of the motion, Alderman Olson.
Yeah, thank you. I'm going to vote no on this motion and I've been pretty public about it in the past. I think that we are stifling our opportunities to have lower bids come in. And quite honestly, this just looks like a solution in search of a problem. We haven't heard from companies. No one has come up and spoken to us and said that they felt like they had been done wrong or that they didn't have a fair shake. Perhaps they've talked to individuals, but in fifteen years, I've certainly never heard that complaint. And I think that it will hurt us more than help us.
Further discussion.
Mayor.
If I could. Bless him.
So just on that, I think, you know, in my time, in a little over a year now, I've had it three separate times, including this week on the Colombarium. So I think it's not, it's not a, you know, a solution in search of a problem. There is a concern. Whether we would call it a problem or not, the good news is, as Jason so nicely pointed out, going with the lowest bidder saves us money. There's no question about that. If we had just done local preference where you get the, you get the benefit, but you don't have to match, yeah, you'd have a problem really quickly. So I think that starts to do that. I think it actually does two things that help the bottom line very significantly. Number one, it makes sure that those that are bidding, and especially those that are out of state or out of the area, are making sure they're bringing their best bid, no matter what, because they know they've got to win that and they know that somebody can match it and come in. It also, by making sure that you don't just get to match it no matter what you put in, you've got to be within five percent to start, our local bidders will make sure they're bringing their lowest bid from the very beginning, because otherwise, they're not going to even have the opportunity. So to me, I think it gives us the best of both worlds in this situation. I think it gives us the best opportunity to get better bids while simultaneously recognizing that some of our local companies are paying an immense amount of property tax. They're driving the economy through sales tax. They're driving the economy through the people they employ and the property tax paid by their employees. So I think this is a way for us to go about that in the least intrusive manner to try to give that preference where we can.
Mark, Alderman Fuller.
Thank you. Yeah, just in the year that I've sat here, I've heard from five different businesses that they have not had a chance to bid or got passed over for the bid or whatever it is. So I do think, while it's not a huge problem in the community, I do think there are people out there that don't feel that the city is always doing right by them. And while I understand that's not necessarily our job, I guess my question to each and one of us up here is if we put a local contractor preference in place and it's for jobs, whatever the number is, and they're matching the lowest bid, so it actually costs us nothing more, and it might be, as Jason and I spoke about today, one or two or three jobs a year, that this might actually impact, very few. What does it hurt if we put it in place and it hurts and it costs us nothing? I don't understand why anybody would vote against making sure our local contractors and our local businesses have an opportunity to be at the table. We're not giving them anything, we're just giving them an opportunity to be at the table.
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Olson.
And my rebuttal to that will be, they won't have to match a low bid if there isn't a real low bid.
City Attorney.
I just have a couple of clarifying questions. So when you say a local preference for North Dakota registered companies, that to me means they're just registered to conduct business in the state of North Dakota with the Secretary of State's website? Or are you contemplating?
So my, their primary business registration is with the state of North Dakota, to be clear. So they're a North Dakota company, North Dakota headquartered, North Dakota-based. So as I was just looking up, I don't see Wagner, actually, as, with a North Dakota registration. They may be registered to do business here, but that's a different thing than being registered as a North Dakota company.
I think they're registered to do business as Wagner Place. Is that accurate, Jason? Right, so they're on, so they're in there, they're registered to do business in North Dakota. It's their headquarters that is different. Like, so that, I believe, shows international falls.
I believe Knife River is the same.
Yeah, so, so again, if I could, Mr. Mayor, as I, and again, this is why we need the legal help to work through this. But as I look at their registration, their formed-in field at the state of North Dakota says Minnesota.
Okay, so that would be, they're registered with the Secretary of State's website, but they're not headquartered in North Dakota.
That's, again, what I'm looking for is a North Dakota company.
Okay, so their headquarters, their primary location says North Dakota.
Well, it's, in this, it says formed in, in the Secretary of State's.
So is there difference incorporated in?
Wondering.
You know, I guess, I guess maybe we need some clear legal definitions of what these terms are that you're using.
So if I could, to the city attorney, do you understand the intent of my motion? I want this to be a North Dakota-based company, okay? That they're formed here, they're formed here, their headquarters is here, that's what they are. They've chosen to do business in North Dakota because North Dakota is where they want to do business. And so that's my intent. I understand that there will be legal questions about how we get to that intent. And I'm happy to engage offline if we need to do that. But certainly, when it comes back, that's what we'll have to solve, right? Yes. So like I said, the way they show it in the North Dakota Secretary of State's website, I believe, it's in the formed-in field, because Wagner Construction, Inc., D B A Wagner Place, is formed in Minnesota.
So would that imply then that they're a Minnesota corporation, but they're doing business in North Dakota?
Exactly.
And they may be a registered contractor or have a contractor's license or whatever that requirement would be?
So then it feeds into my second question, which is the definition of what a substantial operation would be considered. Do you have any specific terms when you think of a substantial operations? Do you mean like minimum twenty employees, minimum?
Yeah, so if I could, Mr. Mayor, there's, I think this is a spot where it would be really instructive to look at other policies. Because as I looked at other policies, there were ones that said, you know, a place of business, which included a storefront, which included some type of signage. I'm open to whatever that means. I don't, I don't really like the arbitrary, because there could be great reasons why you wouldn't hit that exactly. But oh, wow, of course, you're, you know, you're a Minot company, it just doesn't fit exactly the way we wrote it. So that's why, for me, substantial operations, to me, makes sense. But again, I know that that's vague, that's not perfect.
City manager.
I guess my question would be is, if you're requiring a list to be generated where the council approves them as local preference, I guess these are criteria the council would utilize to put them on the list in the first place. Right, and so to a certain degree, the creation of the list kind of addresses a lot of these issues, because the council's going to make a determination on that list, right? And then my question would be is, on that list, is there an annual process on that? Or does someone just come in and request to be on the list and that's brought forward at any time? What's the process the council envisions with this, this list of local preference companies?
I guess I would have another question. If you're, if you're, if you get on the list, are you on it forever?
If I could, I think that's a good question, whatever type of recertification process that we should be looking at. And again, I guess, to be a little honest right now, sitting up here, this is what I hoped we were doing to get to tonight, was to have a bunch of this stuff figured out. Because I can do it as a council member, I can go look up the other policies and figure out what it should look like. And I can write the policy if that's how we want to start the council working. If that's what we want to do. So I was hoping that we would be able to bring a staff proposal for how this would work. And I think what I heard tonight was our staff proposal is, nobody in North Dakota does it, so we don't want to. That's just being honest about it.
Okay, so I think we have, do we have a motion on the floor?
I read it.
I'll contribute my thoughts, I guess, if.
Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, yeah, again, I kind of echo, I fall in line with Alderman Olson. Again, I do see this, again, we see twenty-three million dollars spent since 2012 and three projects have been awarded to non-local contractors. You know, Knife River, they bought Strata. Strata was, you know, again, another company doing business here. I just see it as somewhat, you know, I guess, another thought is, we've heard it from our state legislative body that it's hard enough to get contractors here for flood work, you know, and other projects. You know, I see this as somewhat of a lowering our standards, you know, for taxpayer dollars. And instead, you know, Mike, through our work on the Economic Development Review Committee, I'd like to see us step up our efforts and other opportunities for our local contractors. You know, we have a couple of programs, and again, we can debate those all day long till we're blue in the face. Facade Improvement Program puts local contractors to work. It's been three million dollars in that program that's gone to downtown Minot, yes. But that's three million dollars to height construction, craft construction, our craft builders, ROLAC Construction, local companies, economic development dollars going into, you know, our neighbors, our friends, you know, into those contractors' pockets, putting their employees to work. Renaissance Zone, again, great deal of work being done in those projects that are putting local contractors to work. You know, we talked about, one of the recommendations that's going to come out of the Economic Development Review Committee is Land Development Partnership Committee. You know, how do we, how do we get to the point of being comfortable with things like special assessments for new housing developments so that these new roads are being built, new infrastructure is being put in, and our local contractors are finding more work? Again, I just like, I would like to take the other avenue. I think this is, this is maybe a conversation to have. I don't think we've exhausted all the options, I guess, is what I'm looking at. You know, look at Williams County doing infrastructure grants for new development. I'd like to see us to look at those things to create more work for our local contractors rather than just lowering the standards for taxpayer dollars. That's my thought, and again, I get the match, I get all that stuff. But if we're going to disincentivize non-local contractors to bid on projects, I just, I don't think I'll be on board with a policy. But if a policy comes before us, we'll have that discussion then.
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Alderman Blassem.
So I understand all that, Paul, and I think that there's good points in there when you're looking at those types of projects. But let's keep in mind the project that was in front of us tonight, which was to build a Colombarium at the cemetery. We have a hundred-year-old business across We have a hundred-year-old business across the street from City Hall that bid on that project. A hundred-year-old business in this city. We have a Canadian firm that won the bid. And again, that's good. We're getting a good value for the taxpayer dollars. As, you know, the questions I was asking, the, the hard thing that, that it's hard to really get a handle on is, who is Kiber? Canadian company from Ontario, gonna send us four columbarium pieces that hopefully are what we were looking for? You know who I would know we won't have a question about anything related to what was being built? Thomas Funeral Home. And they're across the street. So we're not just talking about can we generate some work for other people through economic development. Means that's another conversation for another day. For me, this is about the people that have contributed to this city over the long term, making sure that we're giving them every opportunity to meet the needs of the city when it's appropriate. And we're not even saying, look, yeah, you were five thousand high, you get it anyway. Where all we're saying is, yeah, we're gonna let you bid and, and go down to the number if you choose to. Maybe it'll cost sometimes for them, but they want it because they care about their city. That's what this is. This is about Wesley Trucks. This is about columbariums. This isn't about flood control. We've already proven that. It's certainly not about that. We know that it's not about big infrastructure projects that have, have even one dollar of federal funding on it. We've already proven that. We're talking about the little things that actually happen and work for small business around town. That's what this proposal is.
Further discussion. Motion on the floor is?
To direct staff to prepare a draft policy on a local preference for bidding to include their primary business is formed in and is a North Dakota registered company with substantial business within twenty-five miles of Minot. And if local company's bid is within five percent of the lowest, but they have the option to match, and bidders must be pre-registered on the local preference bidding list.
Everybody understand the motion? And I guess it's, and is there no other discussion, then it's time to vote?
The motion passed forward to with dissent from Olson and Pittner.
That brings us to item number nine point three, which is a charitable gaming site authorization policy discussion. Who's leading that? City Attorney.
Yes, and I can keep this really quick. So the North Dakota League of Cities provided a draft charitable gaming site authorization model policy. And this is response to um, legislation that went through the legislature this last session as well. Um, so what it does is it allows cities to have stricter rules than state law about denying applications for charitable gaming site authorizations. But we have to first create and adopt a written policy for issuing those authorizations. And before adopting it, you have to allow for public input. Um, this allows cities to create what's called a local nexus requirement. Um, so there's a proposed policy that's attached by the League of Cities. Staff is neutral on this. Our current policy works fine, but if it's something that the council wants us to direct us to do some more research on it and bring it back, um, we can certainly do that. We can have meetings to answer questions about it. We just wanted to pop it on an agenda and see if this is something that the council has any interest in at all.
Any comments from staff regarding this topic? Or, excuse me, from the council?
Staff. Alderman Fuller. Thank you. Um, what are your, I mean, what are your thoughts? Do we need to go above and beyond what the state has already got in place? Or are we pretty good where we're at?
Um, I mean, again, we're, we're neutral in it. It just kind of depends on if, and, and this would only apply to future gaming sites if the council wants to create what's called this local nexus. So in the League of Cities policy, what they propose as language that could mean the local nexus is to add language to the site authorization um, requirements where like the eligible organization's principal office for its charitable purpose could be located in the city. Could require an office serving its charitable purpose could, could be located there. Um, they could have at least one employee serving the charity's charitable purpose in the city. At least a certain percentage of the board that makes decisions on how that eligible entity's charitable gaming proceeds, that person has to live in the city. It can provide a regional nexus. They have proposed language with that as well. Um, so, but again, it, it, cities like they can't dictate on how they spend their money. Um, you can't require a specific charity to be at a specific site to be eligible for a site authorization. So there's, all the state rules still, still are there. My understanding is the, the legislation came about to try to keep some of that money more local by creating that local nexus requirement for the charity. So it's certainly something that we could, we could revisit and put it on another council agenda if there's more questions.
Alderman Fuller.
Uh, sorry, just real quick, do we have a number of local charities like that are doing gaming, that are moving the money out of the community?
Well, some of them are, like, the charities aren't necessarily located, like, in the city of Minot. So like, I mean, Michaela would probably have a more exhaustive list, and she does a lot of the licensing, but I think the, there's, is it Beulah CVB? Has a gaming site in the city?
Yeah, I would have to look thoroughly, but Beulah CVB would be one. I don't believe the American Foundation for Wildlife is, has. Um, and then I believe ND eighty, I think their local office is out of Fargo. Uh, or they're not local offices out of Fargo. Um, so there are, a- and I would say that maybe affect five sites, four to five sites.
How many do we have total, would you say? A lot.
A lot.
I think it's a plethora, isn't it?
Yeah, and so there's a, there's a model policy that's attached, um, but there's some flexibility there. It's just a model policy. So I just wanted to provide this information to the council. Again, staff is neutral on this.
So, yeah, so Mark, if I could.
Alderman, bless them.
Yeah, the, just some context on this, cause this was a, this was a significant discussion at the legislature again this year. Um, Jose, Jose Casaneda's in District Forty, and the senator there was on the, the Judi- Judiciary Committee, spent a lot of time on it, and he and I have talked about this a lot. Just some context for all of us and the public to hear. Um, charitable gaming in North Dakota, which is, you know, meant to be something that helps the, the charities around us, something I've advocated for, right? Like, we don't want government solutions. Let's work with our nonprofit sector to make things happen. Those are good things. The issue is nine out, nine on, ninety out of every, ninety cents out of every dollar that's played in charitable gambling in the state of North Dakota goes back to the player. Okay, so we, we lop off ninety percent right away. That's back in winnings right off the top. Out of the remaining ten cents that are there, six of those cents can be used for operations, meaning paying staff, paying rent to the entity that's holding your machine in place, which leaves four cents that makes it to the charity. And so there are legislators who get heartburn from that. They look at that and they say, we are, we are allowing what some would think is a destructive force in our communities to help charities with four cents out of every dollar. That's where some of our legislators are saying, maybe that should be seventy cents that goes back to players. Maybe this shouldn't be true gambling. Maybe this is a contribution to the charity that you're supporting. And yeah, have some fun. You might win a little bit of it back. Instead, we're modeling it off what casinos do. And that's in state law. And so that's the conversation going down, down there. That's why they've started to tighten up on some of these things, allow cities to look at, because they were, one of the things, one of the big discussions was the one that we just had, which is, you know, the, a- and again, it's, it's not calling out anyone specifically. They're doing the right thing for their constituents. But like, the Aggie Foundation is working very hard in the Bellev area to make sure that they're getting into a lot of sites, and they're doing a wonderful job to support their wor- their world. But that's not local, so they wanted to give us opportunities to do more things local. And I think that's where the League of Cities ended up on this, the, the policy that they're bringing out. It gives us options to do that. I'll tell you right now, again, I, I apologize, we had a death in our family this week. I didn't get to prep as good as I would have liked to this week. But this is another one that I think is, is worth us looking at, because we have a destructive force going on in our state that right now is running hog wild, and it's not helping the charities the way that we think that it is. This gives us the ability to do that if we chose to. I might come down and say, you know what? We don't need to be more restrictive than state law. That's kind of where I would probably lean, but this does give us the opportunity if we wanted to.
Any further comment or discussion? Alderman Olson.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, from City Attorney clarification, it would only be for new organizations coming in. So we are not going to be having any stronger rules or regulations on those that are already operating within city limits, correct?
Yes, so as drafted, it says this requirement would apply to charities that have not conducted gaming in a specific site in the city before August first, twenty twenty-five.
And, and I'll just say, I guess that concerns me a little bit too. I would rather us be able to look at it more holistically, cause I can agree with Alderman, bless them, and, and some of those points where I think that there, there is maybe some, some misuse and maybe, you know, the, the envelope has been pushed a little bit too much. But if we're only going to restrict the new organizations, I feel that it's not a, a real fair playing field at that point.
Okay. Any further comment? Uh, Michaela.
Can I clarify? Steph, does it, it doesn't necessarily restrict the new organizations, like, for example, if the Beulah CVB were to bring a, a new site authorization, that could be, it, it would just be for the sites they currently hold, for the organizations that are currently not within the local nexus.
That's my, yep, that's my understanding.
My understanding, yes.
And, and I'll just add one more comment in there. As much as I don't like to see it on, and every organizer, in every business, businesses are requesting that they come in. So if we are going to be pro-business and all of a sudden we say, nope, sorry, your restaurant, your bar, whatever, can't have one. I, again, I feel like we're probably meddling in an area that we should not be meddling in.
Okay. Anything further?
So I will stand by unless a council member asks me to add more develop a policy on an agenda, but I don't, I won't bring anything else on more of this on my own accord. So if this is something that a council member wants me to, to work on, just let me know. I have no problem working on it. Um, just wanted to raise the question in the conversation.
Um, thank you, City Attorney. I, I, I guess one thing that, um, you know, some of this is awareness. Um, these, these, uh, the approval for these things kind of come through and, um, it's sort of a matter of routine. And because they're charitable things and, you know, we think of them that way, uh, it, it's, you know, there's too much, too much scrutiny. Um, you know, it might be, it might be good, um, Michaela, if you have that list of who, who all they are, um, all the sites and charities, um, it might be good for you to just shoot that out to us so we could look at it and at least get some sense of what we're actually talking about here. Because I think, um, I think that's not, uh, always top of the mind.
Right, and I think another pertinent detail on this whole thing is, um, these organizations go into the local businesses or get contacted from a local business, and they have to sign a rental agreement. So these business owners are knowingly possibly going with somebody who's not local. So I, you know, they have some sort of, right now, with the way we have it, they have some sort of control over who, who comes into their business and where from. So, something to think about.
Alderman Olson.
One final comment. I know we're getting close to ten o'clock. Four percent is not much. I, I would certainly agree with Alderman, bless them on that too. The school that I retired from had all of the school lunches for an entire year for the whole student body paid for by the four percent from the Aggie Foundation. So when you start thinking about the dollars that are involved in this, it's mind-blowing. But it was, it was a nice benefit to the students in that school.
Just on that, Mark, it's, just to put some color on that, it's well over two billion in the state. And so, you know, I, I think, I think that that's really important. That's where my mind goes, which is, let's make it twenty-four percent instead of four. Let's, you know, let's turn it into what it was meant to be, which is something you do to support a nonprofit as opposed to true gambling, which is where we are today. And so, again, that's not ours, that's, you know, that's off-topic for sure. But the legislature is talking about that very question.
Okay. Um, if that's the final word, uh, that is not an actionable item. We are on to item number ten.
So moved.
Second.
Moving seconded, all those in favor say aye.
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 Gained.